Okay. Okay, microphones on. I'll ask everybody turn their cell phones off or put them on silent. Time being six o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Don.
Here.
Joe.
Here.
Wanda.
Here.
Dan.
Here.
Sherry.
Here.
We have quorum. Next up, is there any reason for anybody to abstain for financial or non-financial conflict of interest?
I do not.
No.
I have none.
Loos, no.
Okay. Is there any changes or additions to the agenda?
I had one, the BFW auxiliary asked if they could use the memorial for a September 11th event. What does that need to be on the agenda, or is that just something that we've done that we've just said okay before?
They just have to fill out, don't we have a form they fill out, it's.
Yeah, okay, so if everybody's okay with that, I'll just fill out the form.
I don't think they need a motion. Yeah, just.
Thank you. Move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Weren't we going to move somebody up?
I think it's gonna be within.
It's in the same number.
Within the item number, so I think it'd be okay. Okay, we've got a motion to approve the agenda with a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those.
Aye.
Don. That motion passes. This time I'll open it up for public comment. Okay, hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. Now is timing on this important on agenda item five?
No, it was an ever takes.
Okay, so move on to item five. I think we'll begin item five, though, with with the oath of office for the director of equalization. Come on up.
Hey Jessica, you wanna repeat after me? I just got Atkins- Atkinson.
Hi Jessica Atkinson.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the constitution of the United States and the constitution of the state of South Dakota.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the constitution of the United States and the constitution of the state of South Dakota.
And faithfully discharge the duties of the Inkton County Director of Equalization to the best of my ability.
And faithfully discharge the duties of the Inkton County Director of Equalization to the best of my ability.
Speech.
Wait, that's your chair.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, thank you very much.
So with that, I will open the floor to you, Ms. Atkinson.
All right. So we have a couple job descriptions that we just need to have approved by you guys. According to the handbook, if we change a job description, then we need to have it approved. So right now we have two openings. The first one is field appraiser slash deputy and the second is administrative assistant. We have two openings in the office, it doesn't add any people to the current six that we have. But we have one that we're replacing and one that's leaving soon, so.
Okay. Did everybody have a chance to go through those job descriptions? I know I didn't find anything that.
Well, I really like that what she's doing with the field appraiser could not assess properties and what she's doing is kind of combining that. Field appraiser slash assessor, so that really makes that position a lot versatile, in my opinion, and it's a good, it's a good move, so.
Thank you.
Move approval.
Second.
I think, do you want to clarify? Do you need both?
Yeah. Okay, I'll move approval of the field appraiser slash assessor position.
I'll second the amended motion.
Is that the deputy appraiser job description?
Yeah, and and that's gonna be in a field appraiser slash deputy, it's also an appraiser.
Yeah, yep, exactly, so, yeah.
Okay.
And that might be better, it might be better to say that field appraiser slash field appraisers is really kind of what that job is, I guess, slash deputy, so I'm fine with that.
Okay, motion by Clemish, second by Fox to approve the DOE deputy appraiser job description. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion passes, and entertain a motion for the administrative assistant job description.
So moved, Loos.
Second.
Motion by Loos, second by Kettering, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay, motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good luck, go get it.
Thank you.
We're trying, thank you very much, I hope it, it'll be great.
There's not a packet item, but we've, we have the salaries to address Director of Equalization salaries.
Do you want me up here for, there's two, Andrea's and and the director. Yeah, cuz I don't need the amount for.
Right, I think with Andrea's, you're within your budget.
Yeah.
I think that will be up to you, I think for the.
So it's just me?
I believe it'll be just you at this point.
Yep, yep, that's correct. If Andrea's being promoted, the director has the ability to put them into the correct step and up to three above where they're currently at. So Jessica, I can get you those rules, so you can look that over, but tonight we do need to do your salary adjustment.
Okay.
Right, and I don't have that in front of me, just to kind of give a brief overview, we we hired Jessica in at this position. You know, we had some interviews, hired her in, and it's requested for a higher salary due to some of the circumstances in the in the office, and I guess I would agree that you've got a bit of an uphill battle there. Being short-staffed for quite a bit, you can, and bringing on some new employees, so I don't have the request in front of me, though, the grade and the step.
I've got that, I've got that, Joe, it's grade 11, step 2, which moves her to $57,834.23.
Okay.
I move approval of the proposed salary.
I'll second that.
So we've got a motion by Kettering, second by Loos, to move Jessica Atkinson from grade to a grade 11, step 2. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Yeah, oh, thank you. Okay, we're gonna hold off on item 6 for about seven more minutes. I think we can move on to the move on to the gravel bids. Mike, you're here. We'll move on to item 7.
Just only had one bidder for the gravel on the west side of the county, 30,000 tons. The only bidder was Utica gravel.
Who?
Utica gravel. 740 a ton.
Is that comparable? I have nothing to compare it to.
It is in there.
It's higher than what has been in the past, but I guess everything else is going up. I just need approval.
I'll move approval of the bid, second, for Ralph Markwork. Utica gravel.
Motion by Kettering, second by Clemish, to approve the bid Utica gravel for $7.40 a ton, 30,000 tons. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5 for 0.
The next budget transfer from the designated highway funds, the money that we set aside for asphalt to go into asphalt milling overlay account on into the budget. Looking for the dollar amount of 434,647.06.
Do you want to just make that?
So.
To the next dollar. What's the amount?
434,647.
We don't want to worry about the cents.
Yeah.
Sherry, did you have something to add?
Yep, yep, I do, so Mike, you're doing this because is your account negative right now, that you want to transfer these funds now?
It will be tonight, just for the asphalt milling overlay, that's the only one that will be negative on that. Because we did agree to do the asphalt overlay on Walston.
So. Right, and the the only thing I'm gonna bring up here is that we have ARPA funds. And right now we have 1.1 million dollars that has been freed up because of revenue losses that we can use on anything. And those dollars have to be used up by 2024. So in in my mind, I think it would be better to transfer these dollars out of that account against that 1.1 million dollars. Because the money that you're you're looking to pull doesn't have a deadline.
And I would agree.
So if we're gonna start, if we're gonna start using the ARPA money and especially the revenue loss that has been set aside for essentially anything we want to use it for. We we said at one time, if we got a rainy day fund, it would go into roads and bridges, so that would be my suggestion at this point is to pull it out of the ARPA account.
And are we a positive that that's gonna be reimbursed in in that regard? Because when I was at the District 3 meeting a couple weeks ago, there was a there were no straight answers on what we get reimbursed from and what we don't. I hate to put ourselves in this predicament down the road.
Well, I'd rather take it out of the ARPA account if we can use it and then worry about it later rather than not spend that money and then
Yeah.
have it go back.
It didn't seem like there's any clear answers, at least when I.
So I I have, I have set through all of the NACO calls on this since this began in March. And I have read all of the treasury rules, the interim rules, and the guidance that they put out. And everything that I have seen says the revenue loss that is calculated. And we used the spreadsheet that was supplied by treasury. Everything I have read is we can use those for anything. And in this case, I'm 99.9% sure that this is a covered expense. The expenses I'm unsure of are the ones that would qualify under another program like buying ambulances and things like that.
And that's, I was gonna reiterate, I, my understanding is with the the revenue loss portion of the ARPA funds, that's that's the counties to do with what we want. The, some of the other monies coming to the county, we need more clarification on.
I just, and and I I agree, it's a great way to spend it, I just don't want to put the county in the position where from what was said at District 3 is there's a lot of uncertainty out there on what these funds can be and cannot be spent on. I would just like to, you know, send out something up to District 3 or the State Association and just get clarification, are we fine spending this money on here? Because if, for some reason, something changes, we're gonna be scrambling, making up this amount, so.
Then we, then we just pull it from the road and bridge account and put it back in the ARPA fund.
Right.
But like I said, I'm I'm absolutely positive we can do this. Where all the questions lie are with can we buy radios? And call it to address COVID, can we buy ambulances and call it to address COVID, et cetera.
Do we have a motion?
We do not yet have a motion. Would you like to make a motion?
I think I'll let Ms. Loos make a motion because it sounds like she has it investigated and then I will second.
Okay. Did you hear that?
So I would move, yep, I did, I did. So I would move to transfer the requested funds from the ARPA count under the revenue loss category.
And I would second.
Should, should we do a dollar amount?
Yep, we have a motion from Loos, second by Fox, to transfer 434,648 from the ARPA revenue loss funds to road and bridge funds.
For further discussion, I I think we, if anything, we should round down instead of up, because if we the way the government is, if we ask for spend 648 and our bill is only 647. You know, I would rather be a little bit short than rounded up.
There's gonna be more coming, correct?
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Any further discussion? Wanda, second.
Sorry.
Okay, motion and a second, all those in favor signify with aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. And while you're here, we will move right into the Fleeves Bridge load rating. So when we I think when we left, there was potential questions for Clark Engineering. I don't, did you get any questions there? From any of the commissioners that, to ask them, to ask Clark?
Not outside of the meeting, I guess. The only thing that was, got out of Clark is we could go back to the old LFR rating, which would be legal loads. The only thing that I know or that we discussed about that is if we would decide to go and apply for a big grant. We would have to go back to the new rating a year in advance, because when applying for a big grant, they look at the prior year of the load rating that we would be at, so.
Yeah, well, in effect pushes out one year later.
If if we, if we would know that if we would know that we were going to apply for something in two years, yes, the year before we're going to apply, we need to go back to the new rating.
So we were gonna apply for a big grant in January of 2023. Would it be January 2025 before we could get it?
Right.
I'm gonna try to find this email, I thought.
And this.
22.
I just picked at the, he's, he said two years.
Well, they look at the year behind, you know, so if we're gonna apply in January of 2025, or December of 2023, we better have it back to the new rating.
So what good does that do us? What, what? All it is confused.
The one, so what, where we're at, the request was to go to to single truck when when Clark reran the calculations, a single truck rating using LRFR, which is the new rating, puts it at 38 tons, it's currently at 33 tons. And so a couple of things could happen, we could go to 38 ton single truck, we could go to 40 tons using the, essentially the old rating and have two lane traffic again, or we could kind of blend that and go single truck, but remain at 40 tons. Essentially to open that bridge up. Now, I have reached out to the state, I was originally told that if we went to single truck load rating.
A single truck, you're saying one truck.
One truck, have a, yep, a sign that says one truck at a time. If we were to do that, when we then applied for, for our big grant, they would take that into account and they would utilize two lane LRFR ratings, the new method, which would be where we're at today. That was under the assumption that a single truck, if you look at the, the last rating from Clark Engineering or I make, the LFR original load rating was legal loads for single lane trucks. And so I think the assumption, and I know I made the assumption, was that a single truck has gotta be lighter than a whole line of trucks in one line. Now they're saying they, that analysis was done in the center of the bridge, if you move it over, it now would be 38 tons. And so if we were to go to 40 tons, whether it's two lane or single truck, we still need to get more clarification from the state, and I've reached out to them, I just have not heard anything back, if we could use that big rating. The other thing I think that's important to factor in, though, is that this bridge today doesn't even qualify for the big grant. It's in too good a shape. So we we may be running under this for five years, 10 years, we don't know. And and so I talked with Mike a little bit. You know, this has annual inspections on it. Clark currently is not watching any problem areas on the bridge, you know, there's no.
Nothing critical other than a scour.
Right, so the the only real issue is scour and that has nothing to do with the bridge, it's everything underneath the bridge. So.
And and one more thing with the big rules, big grant rules, so like we're going to apply for the replacement for Stone Church this coming January, so if we get awarded that, that's three, three and a half million that we're going after. We will not be able to apply again for another three years for a big replacement like that, because you can only expend four, four million in three years. So the soonest we could apply again would be 27.
So my only concern about the whole thing, one, one truck or two trucks on it, or whatever weight we get is what our liability is if something happens.
It's a, I asked that to several state DOT members, and there's zero liability to the county. It's a, it's a federal it's a federal sign that already exists for a single single truck posting, we're no more liable, if something were to happen than we are as it's posted today. You know, if we made this sign up, you know, if it didn't exist, it would maybe a different story, but it's, it's an approved sign by the, what is it called, federal? There's a manual for it.
M, M, M U M U T D C or something like that, yes.
So what did I make say then? Did they, did they recommend opening it up? I mean, we paid him good money, I would like like a report from the engineers and giving us advice on what we should do with this, I guess.
Coming from, from I make, they said it was either way. It's more of the, I make told me that it was more of your, a political decision on this part.
Yeah, they gave us the ratings, which would be so using new, new methods, LRFR, the ratings are 24, 38 single truck. Or if two lane, it would be 24, 33 that we're at today, using the old rating. Legal loads actually is what it's rated to. Technically, we could go to 43 ton.
Mike, I'm putting you on the spot. You know more about this bridge than anybody else, and I want your recommendation on what you want to do. That's why you get paid the big bucks. You know, I guess, but before you say that, I could see both sides of this, we want this bridge open and to be used, but it has had problems in the past. And if we do break it and damage it, we're in big trouble.
What problems has it had?
Well, didn't it have that big crack that we had to drill out?
It did have a crack that we had to drill out, but that after this year's inspection, nothing has moved.
It, and this bridge has been slated for replacement for at least two mission, two commissions ago, I mean, 10 years, you know, back a long time ago. It was stated this bridge needed to be replaced, and at one point there was a, you know, quite a bit of money to replace that. So I, I guess I'm, I'm putting it on you, Mike, you tell us, you tell us what your opinion is.
No pressure. I have, that's a hard, hard answer. How many years is it going to be before the bridge is able to be applied for a big grant, you know? We have had one crack in the bridge, the, otherwise the structure, the it's the best conditioned gem of a bridge that we do have outside of the scour.
Let me ask you this, how many extra loads of asphalt are you hauling on 46 or on Walston?
Quite a few.
Because you can't run full trucks over it.
But either way, for us, it doesn't, we're still at 24.
Right.
So for the, to help out the highway department, it does not help itself.
And I think, I, I don't think Joe's incurring that we should help out the highway department. I would not want to make a decision based on the highway department benefiting and somebody else being at higher risk. Or more convenient.
How many trucks do you anticipate would go over the bridge at the higher load limit? I mean, are we talking five or are we talking 500?
That, that's a good question, I girl mark is right there, now, it, maybe it could be another 100 trucks a day, I don't know that.
Well, I wouldn't think they'd have that many.
I wouldn't foresee it being any more than it, than it was before the posting change.
Yeah.
If that makes sense. So what what happened with the posting though is is. The posting didn't change from from forty ton to thirty three ton because there was a deficiency found in the bridge. It was simply if a bridge was designed today. It would go under the new load ratings.
Of.
Of the L R F R, which is thirty three ton, thirty three tons. So we're, we're. There's no liability and we're completely legal to operate under the L R. At L F R rating, the. Previous one.
Which for the bridges built for.
Right, so where where it comes in one, because you missed a lot of. Previous discussion on this. When we apply for a big grant. They're gonna look at what we have that rated at. And if it's at forty tons, our score on that bridge goes down, so we have less likelihood of.
To get it.
To get it. So.
I saw in the newspaper that they awarded a bunch of big grants.
Yeah.
None of which came to.
None to here.
We got some real big shares in the last couple three years.
Yeah, we've gotten done well.
Like not been paying as much attention the last couple of years.
So we can operate under either or it's just gonna affect our big score. Now my standpoint. Is that, one, the bridge isn't even eligible for a big grant. It's in too good of condition. So until something happens, we can't even apply for a big grant.
For that bridge.
For that bridge. And then two, two, if we look at Stone Church Bridge, that's rated at what, eleven and?
Eleven thirteen.
Thirteen, so thirteen tons for a semi versus thirty three that this one's rated. That one didn't even get awarded a big grant because the score wasn't high enough. So we could be. In my opinion.
Not getting any grants for many years.
Not getting any for many years, and this would be sitting de-rated. For a long time and effectively unusable by by truck traffic. It's a car bridge only. And so we had the discussion once upon a time of going back to the L R F. Or L F R rating, which would be. We could pick either twenty four forty or actually open it up to legal load, so it could be up to forty three tons. In the the conversation at that time was. We don't know the likelihood of of. That impact, if it's gonna, you know, deteriorate faster, if it's gonna do, you know, any significant damage. Um, so we explored the the single truck bridge rating. And now that's showing using the L R F R new rating thirty eight tons. My thought is. We could still run thirty eight tons for the next fifteen years, maybe ten years, who knows? So my thought is to. Bridge the gap and go twenty four forty. With a single truck. So we're still rated less than what our maximum would be. Um, but it's opened up. Down the road, if if uh something. Happens to that bridge, let's say there's a crack next year. It's it's gonna be inspected annually. So if a crack or something were to appear, we can reevaluate. If it. If there is no damage, we can operate that way up until the year before we apply for a big grant. And I think we're gonna have plenty of heads up on that. I mean, we're gonna have to have money in the bank. Um, and reasoning and the score is gonna have to be there. So that's my thought is.
And I can support Joe's, I support Joe's view on that for the same reasoning. Um, this bridge could be sitting idle for ten or fifteen years. I mean, we have to be realistic. Uh, if they were talking about replacing the bridge ten years ago, and it's not even number one on our list. It reasonably ten years is probably when that bridge may come up because there may be another bridge before it. And as was stated, we can only get a big grant probably every three or four years with as much money as we are asking for. So that I I do think it's wise um to use that bridge as much as we can. As Joe stated, the issue is down below, and we could close that bridge to trucks altogether, and that's not gonna address the issue down below.
Yeah, I think even talking with Clark, that the main concern is the scouring below the bridge rather than the actual condition of the bridge. And you know, the other part of the equation that we're missing is will the D O T. Let us utilize this and still apply for that big grant using the two. Originally, they said they would. But I think that was under the assumption that it would be rated at forty tons using the new method.
So your suggestion is we rate at twenty four forty under the old method?
With a posted as single truck bridge.
Well, with two signs, one truck.
Yep.
One on either end.
That's what I would suggest.
We just gonna have a sign or flashing lights or how are we gonna, how are we gonna do that safely?
It operated, sorry, go ahead.
At at least a sign on each end. State that's it had that back in two thousand twelve. Same sign, and if if you guys feel that we need to put a flashing light on there, I can.
You got some flashy lights, do you?
I'd have to order two more.
Does this bridge operated as a, it was posted single truck only for years? Um, it's also narrow. I don't, it's not very often you have two trucks on there at a time.
Well, based on the. Assumption that we have zero legal liability. I would woo that we. Except Joe's uh suggestion.
Of twenty four forty under the old.
Yeah.
L F R with posted a sign on each end, one truck only.
Yep.
Then I would second.
For further discussion, I I'm okay with with this, but if we get a bunch of reports about it not working out. We're gonna need to reevaluate. Is that okay with everybody?
Well, I think so, and there's like I say, we'll kind of monitor the annual inspections too. Doesn't start.
When is the annual ins- inspection, do you know? Or is it just a surprise?
In the summers, usually it, is there a set time? It's usually July, August.
Okay, so I have a motion by Kettering, second by Fox, uh to post Fleek's Bridge at twenty four. Forty twenty four, single forty combination with a single truck posting. All those in favor.
Wait, we were gonna have, he's gonna put signs and flashing lights on there as well.
So.
That doesn't have to be on just. You're gonna do.
Right, it has to be posted that way anyway.
Single lane truck signs. I don't believe we have any on hand.
That's I was just gonna ask if we need to set a date on this.
I think so.
How long does it take you to get that stuff?
I think we can say effective as soon as it's posted.
Okay. The signs, it's. Sometimes you can get them in a week and a half, other times it's three weeks.
And how many desks they're building.
Tell them to put a rush on it and we'll get them as soon as.
It'd probably be nice to get it.
Okay, so motion is twenty four forty, single truck posting, it'll be effective um effective upon posting. So we'll try to run something in the paper.
With signs and flashing lights?
Yes, with signs and lights.
I just wanted to make sure we knew what we were voting on.
Send out an email when you do it.
Okay, uh all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Mike. Thanks, Mike. Okay, we're gonna circle back to item six. Prove the provisional budget.
And you guys should have that. I said it all before.
I'm sorry?
You should have that. I sent it before.
That was out of emailed, right? It's not in the pack.
No.
But it's emailed, yeah.
Posted in the newspaper.
Right, did anybody have any questions concerned with the provisional budget?
A move approval of provisional budget.
Uh, don't we have to do public and put it on that?
It's been to Harry.
Yeah, so you get it.
Sure. So hold that thought, Don. Would anybody like to make comment on the county's provisional budget at this time? Hearing and seeing none, and bring it back to the board or motion.
And I'll second.
Motion by Kettering, second by Fox. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Those opposed. Motion passes five zero. Okay, moving on, item eight. Ball.
Evening.
I'm here tonight to request uh vehicle acquisition uh for the, for our department. We do have uh in the last three years, we've been putting uh money away into a capital accu- capital accumulation account. Uh, I have one bid here from uh Broadway Chrysler here in town. Uh, the question was, I had a question. Sherry asked me. Uh, like, how soon would we need this or to get the transfer of money? I'm not asking for transferring money tonight. I'm just asking permission to go ahead and order it because it's looking at anywhere from three to four months out. So we've got plenty of time to make that acquisition or transfer the money. The big thing tonight would be to request the funds. Uh, what I would be doing is is replacing. Uh, we have an older truck with search and rescue, so two thousand and four Dodge pickup. Uh, that will either sell surplus, maybe another department would want it, and then the one I've got would move into search and rescues fleet. And they would have a little new vehicle to have, and then I would have a newer one for myself, which is keep moving them down because they all got. The other two vehicles I got over a hundred and thirty, five hundred and forty thousand miles now. So we're just trying to upgrade what they have down there. So it's all tonight is just uh basically permission to go ahead and tell these guys. Uh, I went to all the uh the other dealers and they're the only ones that would come back with a quote under the state contract. Because of the pickups or vehicles are so hard to get this year. That we were able to come up with this. This dollar amount will be lesser. Right now, because they, right now, they can't tell me the fee. Because the time I ordered, there'll be the dealer, when it's delivered, there's the dealer discounts at that time. But we're looking at under forty five, forty four thousand dollars. All of a sudden, this bid says forty five. Uh, one sixty, but they were, they assured me it'd be less, at least two thousand dollars less, if not more at the time of uh delivery.
Then why didn't they put it on their bid since they assured you of it?
Well, they don't actually have, that's what they told me, but again, they they don't know what the exact amount would be at the time. I. Okay, so we'll just say forty seven thousand dollars. I mean, I I can't say.
How many miles your truck have on it?
Ninety two.
Is there anything mechanically wrong with your truck?
No.
Your current truck?
My my current truck is, there's that perfectly fine, yes.
I'd personally like to. Wait, it's about the worst time ever to buy a, any new vehicle. And we would hope that in a few months or six months that. The price would come down some. Is there anything wrong with the search and rescue truck or is it just getting some miles on it?
It's really getting, it's starting to miss and it's gotta be six and it's, it used to got, it was originally the sheriff's department's vehicle. And then in two thousand and eleven, we transferred. I had a Tahoe, which made no sense, I felt, and then we, we swapped. And that was actually the gray one that Clint drove for many years, when Clint was here, and I don't know who's driving it now, but. Uh, so I ended up with an older vehicle, but it was something that I felt that we needed in our department because we haul stuff. Or so then a Tahoe. So we've been staying with pickups ever since.
And I know we looked at that in the capital outlay for budgeting this year, correct?
Yep.
And there's forty five thousand in that.
Make care of my motion.
Who calls a request for. Or a replacement vehicle?
Motion by Kettering to approve the request. Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of.
Oh, I was, I was gonna second that, Joe, sorry.
Yep, no problem. Okay, so we have a motion by Kettering, second by Lost. Uh, to approve vehicle acquisition. In the amount uh less than forty seven thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars for twenty two.
I would.
Twenty twenty two. God ram.
I would just feel com- more comfortable if whomever gave you this bid. Randomly picked a number for the rebate so that we would know it's less than actually forty seven thousand. And I understand you won't know until they come, but. If he thinks it's gonna be thousand, then. It would make sense to. To have them put. Minus two thousand in rebates, so he doesn't, we don't end up paying forty seven thousand, one hundred. One hundred and sixty dollars.
And if it's not gonna arrive for two or three months, I mean, maybe we could wait a month or two and see if. You know, the price comes down a little bit on some of these because there are getting to be more vehicles coming into.
No, we get the state rate on these.
Do you have to let them know though?
Right, if I say that, go ahead and do this, we're locked in at, on this particular vehicle, if there comes, a new one comes in next month, and it's exactly the same thing unless. I know that, can we cancel it? I I'd have to find that out. I don't know, you know, the the disorder versus that order. I would have to get that information because I can't tell you that. I didn't ask that question. Whatever he feels right, I mean, I'll do, you know, me.
My, I guess my thoughts are I don't know that that lead time's gonna come in anytime soon. We just approve the provisional budget and this was budgeted for. So I'd I'd be inclined to to approve this and. A lot of ways. Very more discussion. With that.
Did you say there's forty five thousand in the account now?
It's in accumulated. We have to move it when we pay for, we'll have to move it.
I understand that, so then why don't we approve it at forty five thousand, which is the funds that we have there?
Well, we've got a motion a second. I know what you're saying, but we do have a motion a second.
She could amend the motion against the votes. I I would support that, Wanda, prove it at forty five. Because that's what we budgeted for. We don't want a whole budget before we even permanently adopt it. And if we gotta transfer some funds to make it up later, we could certainly.
And I think both ends are achieved. Paul gets a new truck. The trucks all move down, and then we have money to pay for it.
Did you second that? No, Sherry seconded that.
Sherry seconded it because it first it died with.
You have to make a motion to amend.
I would make a motion to amend Mr. Kettering's motion to approve the purchase of a. Two thousand twenty two, fifteen hundred tradesmen crew cab four by four pickup. Not to exceed forty five thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
Okay, so there's a a motion to amend the motion by Fox, seconded by Clemish. Uh, not to exceed forty five thousand dollars. All those in favor of the amendment?
Hey, I ask a question, no person?
Sure.
If I go back with this to them and say, this is all we're gonna be able to spend, and they say not gonna happen, it's just, we just leave it die? Or just say not gonna happen?
Well, they've all.
Well, I mean, I can't tell you exactly, I mean, I have no problem. I, I do whatever you want me to do, but I, I'll need to know.
Well, but you're the one that said, that guy at the dealership said it's probably gonna be two thousand dollars less.
Right.
Tell him that horrible person of the commission said no more than forty-five thousand. Make it my fault. I'm okay with that.
Okay, so we'll have, we're gonna do roll call vote on, on the amendment. So, this isn't on the overall. This is if we're gonna amend it or not. Roll call vote, please, Patty.
Wanda?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Don?
No.
Sherry?
No.
No.
No. Okay, so the amendment fails, so now we're gonna move forward with the original motion.
So, we, we budget for, wh- why did we budget for forty-five thousand then?
So, so over the years for capital outlay, I think Paul has probably put away fifteen thousand dollars for an estimation for what it would be to buy a new truck. We do the same thing with ambulances. We put a round number away every year to estimate what it will be to replace an ambulance. We don't know what those numbers are gonna be in the future, and I don't know if anybody's checked sticker prices on new trucks in the lots. But this is very reasonable. There's trucks out there with seventy thousand dollar sticker tags. So, it, so this is an out of line and it's only two thousand dollars above what Paul was guessing at over the last three years.
With that, I'll take a roll call vote, please, Patty. On the ver- on the first motion as it, as, uh, the quote is presented.
We have a little further discussion. I know that we, you went out and, and followed the, the state bids and only got one bid. But I'd really like to see more than one. I, you know, I don't wanna take it for one person's word that this is a good deal. If we, we had some more bids and, and maybe took a little more time, this might be a good deal.
I think you asked for.
I don't know.
Bits, correct?
Sure, the garage won't bid it.
They won't bid it.
Because they can't get the trucks. Ford doesn't have a state yet right at this moment. I mean, that's what we decided to do. I, I'm not.
Sure.
I'm just coming forth.
This is, you know, this is the only bid, so basically we, we have to accept it, and I just, I just don't like that situation. Because it is, it's only two thousand dollars, but it's two thousand dollars of the taxpayers' dollars.
With, Dan, we do it all the time.
Well.
We just did it twenty minutes ago with the gravel pit. The only deal.
Well, I, I still don't like it.
Roll call vote, please, Patty.
Don? On your.
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Wanda?
No.
Dan?
No.
Joe?
Yes. Motion passes.
Alright, thank you.
We have plenty of time. We're now move, get, need to move into board of adjustment. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion to move into board of adjustment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 We're now board of adjustment. Okay, uh, item number nine, concrete materials CUP. Bill's gonna pull that up. If you wanna step forward, it's representative. Could you please state your name and, uh, I guess give an overview of your project and we'll.
And talk loud because some of us are old.
My name is Justin Foss from Concrete Materials. We are trying to open up a gravel pit on the frick land on three oh six and four forty-one. We have worked with, uh, Mission Hill Township. We have worked with, uh, Yankton Planning Zoning Board on how we can go about this and make it the easiest on the public. And we've addressed issues. We've addressed road condition. Working with the township, we've worked with, they're gonna replace a pipe was an issue. Then we worked with the adjacent landowners of what they were looking for to make this go as easy as possible. We're gonna currently build a driveway. We're gonna work with the Nelsons with fixing, making proper drainage going through the driveway to make us go down into our gravel pit. There's also with the fricks that there was an agreement with, with it being narrow and where they're putting the new pipe in and replacing this hundred-year-old pipe is they're gonna donate some dirt and then take care of the trees. Basically get this going. Um, we've done our due diligence. We've talked with the public. We've tried to address everyone's concerns. And, you know, we're just hoping to get this done over.
Is there any questions from the board for the applicant at this time?
I do not.
Okay, sir, if you'd like to sit down and I'll open it to public comment. Anybody in the audience like to comment on this project at this time? Now is your chance.
Daryl Nelson. We're at this point where we got no issues there. I know the only issue I got here, we left at the last planning and zoning meeting about the placement of possible stop signs there. And, uh, I'm not sure where that issue is right now. Maybe the township can address it here. But, uh, whether that's a part of this package, in my opinion, uh, they were talking about multiple stop signs at that intersection. That should be a township decision. So, that gives them the flexibility to, uh,
What a minute or take them out?
Change to another, so.
It looks like requested at four forty-one and three oh six.
Yeah, there's a, Panina North going into there. There's currently a yield sign that should be changed to a stop sign. That's a smart issue. But there was questions at the last planning and zoning whether there should be stop signs placed on three oh six one way or both ways, so. I guess my opinion is it should be left in the township's hands, but, uh, that's.
So, you're in favor?
Yeah, I, I think time to move on. We've asked this one enough, so. It's just a question of the stop signs, if it's got control, so.
Thank you, Daryl.
Thank you, Daryl. Anybody else like to speak on this project?
Dan Hachiski representing Mission Hill Township North. And as far as the stop sign goes, that's kind of according to the information I got, that's kind of up to the township to make the decision. And then there's also the speed limit signs were addressed on that planning and zoning meeting. That's a little bit more difficult. We have to publicize that and we have to have hearings on the speed limit change. Stop signs, it's at our discretion. And as long as their plan comes into effect and the fricks comply with everything what they're stating, I, the township doesn't have no problem. The only problem I know probably is the, we don't have the pipe bought yet. You know, unless there's a major cost change in the cost of that pipe, you know, we, that's unseen yet. I mean, we don't know. You guys got any questions for me?
So, you're, you're okay with it, the speed limit currently, and you're okay with?
Well, the speed limit, we, we, I think is at fifty-five, and we were talking about making it thirty-five. But that process to change the speed limit requires a couple hearings and some posting in the paper. And then if anybody has opposition of it, then they have the right to speak up. Stop sign is more easier than replacing the speed limit sign.
So, is the township going to purchase the pipe or is Knife River purchasing the pipe?
Well, we'd like to have Knife River purchase the pipe, but, uh, it's gonna.
Have you asked them?
Yes.
Have they declined?
Yes.
They don't even wanna share the cost?
Well, that could be, would you like to share the cost?
How, how much is it? How much is it?
Well, the pipe, we're looking at probably a hundred feet of five inch or five feet pipe. And with the cost of replacing it, we're looking at forty thousand dollars. And our annual budget's between sixty-eight and seventy thousand for our township. So, we're gonna use up over half our budget just on that pipe and, and to address. There's a problem there with the existing culvert is there is some decay. It's a box culvert four by four. And it, uh, it is showing some decay. It's, it's undermining it. And to replace this and do it right, we're gonna, the road is sloughing off on the north side. We have to bring in so many ton of dirt. That's where the fricks, we're gonna donate the dirt instead of hauling the dirt in. It's probably gonna take two thousand ton of dirt to stabilize that road, to get a shoulder on that road. And currently, there's trees that are, um, in the ditch. And they have to be removed just so this whole project can be, have the road open and so they can kind of close in.
I, I believe when we had the planning and zoning meeting, uh, there was the expectation that the landowner would be there and he wasn't.
Yeah, he is here tonight.
He is, okay.
Yeah, representing his family. Chris is here tonight representing the family.
No problem.
And we do have a paper signed by Jack Frick stating that he would donate the dirt and remove the trees. And as far as the road approach going in, um, as long as Knife River Concrete Materials agreed to that eight, about eighty-five yards back to, you know, like we talked about at the planning and zoning, if that all comes in effect, if their plan, I don't know if they presented that plan to you. If they had any drawings of that, how they were gonna do that, I don't know. So.
Bill, we haven't seen that ever.
Approval by who? Before you do a plan?
No, we have a plan. It's just the fact that right now for what we have to do, you can start at zero and work your way back up to make it as easy grade without having approval. We're, we're just buying a dump of money in the.
Are you saying an entrance approval?
The entrance approval, the only thing we have for, we have to do is put a pipe in. That's minimum, uh, about eighteen inch, or just, uh, it's an actual building. They're looking for spot elevations.
Oh.
Like a.
I guess we're, in, what we had talked about at planning and zoning is that sort of accommodate the trucks, don't sit on the road. They'll be off the road into a wide area where they could possibly hold up to four trucks if you park two and then two behind them.
So, they can turn in off the road.
Turn in off the road and then enter into the frick property approximately eighty-five yards down, and that's where they would gate it at.
Okay.
Concrete materials could gate it on the frick property.
Okay. And you don't have it, you don't have the plan because you're
Kind of waiting on.
Right. But that's, that's an acceptable condi- acceptable condition of this, uh.
And the county or the township didn't hold out for a little money for the pipe?
We haven't gone on the road yet.
I could use some support here.
So, I'm trying.
The cost of the pipe is, the cost of the pipe is about forty thousand. Well, that's the installation and everything of the pipe. The actual cost of the pipe is probably, I'm thinking around a hundred and seventeen dollars a foot. So, if you take a hundred feet. Yeah, it was a hundred feet. It was a hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-five cents. That comes out to eleven thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars for the culvert. A hundred foot long. And then you'd need a band to band them together, and then there were some flared ends where the water would enter.
So, Dan, there's, I'm just looking at the findings of fact here. And it talks about, you know, on the conditions at the road hall agreements honored by the applicant. Do you actually have a road hall agreement?
Yes, they presented us a road hall.
Okay, and that's what?
Acceptable.
Acceptable, okay.
It's in the passage, Joe.
Having, having, having sat on the planning and zoning, going through this process, I, I do, I just like to say, I think this is a process where all parties came to the table and, and discussed items and came to good conclusions on how to resolve.
Correct. It took us about four meetings to, to get it all in place.
Lots of time.
Yep.
I did see that bill also. Yeah, I don't remember which. I just wanted to make sure it's all, everybody's in agreeance and.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else in the audience care to make comments on this project? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. We'll bring it back to the board for final decision.
Sound like everybody was agreeance with the condition to have off-road truck parking. So, I think that should be part of the conditions because.
I'll move approval of the conditional use permit for concrete materials, uh, and, uh, with the qualifier that the truck parking area is completed.
Motion by Kettering, um, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so motion by Kettering, second by Clemish, um, to approve based on the findings of fact with the additional condition that the, uh, requested truck parking is, um, in addition to the plan.
And I think that's already in the plan.
What? I think he means completed, actually completed.
So.
Since it's only an idea.
We'll go through, uh, what the planning commission, um, findings. Mailings were out. Uh, it was a five-zero approval of the, of the permit, um, application with the conditions discussed, the road hall agreements, et cetera. Ingress egress has been, um, discussed with stop signs at four forty-one and three oh six. Uh, township, you'll look into speed limits down the road at a township meeting maybe, but, um, given the culvert to be replaced and entrance wide and refuse service is available. Uh, utilities have been addressed. Uh, there's no screening or buffering that's been identified. Says signs will be placed where required. I don't know that we have any, but you'll have a entrance sign that yeah, generally compatible with the area. Any further? Pardon? On?
You mean, starting it, finishing it?
Yeah.
There's not, uh, through, through state law. Once the CUP is awarded, there's, uh, two years to begin. And a, and pulling a building permit or, you know, doing any work on the approved plan, I guess, is, is constitutes beginning. So, two years to, to begin, I guess. Any more discussion at the board?
I'm sorry?
Any more discussion from the board? Okay, roll call vote, please, Patty.
Don?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Wanda?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Uh, motion passes five zero.
Thank you, thank you all for your cooperation and work to get, cooperate and go forward together.
Okay, next on the agenda, item ten, Cheryl, Cheryl Bachman, CUP.
Isn't it Beckman?
Beckman, yeah, it's Beckman.
Go ahead.
The beacon still shows this all, this one lot. She's purchased two of three lots that rectangle has been divided. She owns the bottom two lots together.
Okay, are they two separate or two combined? Okay.
They're two lots.
Each have a legal description, like, uh, K and L.
K and L, K and L, yeah. Cheryl Beckman, and so what I've applied for is a conditional use permit to do a storage unit or storage building. Um, that is, um, sixty-four by. That is sixty-four by forty-two, which is just, it's two hundred and eighty-eight square feet larger than the twenty-four hundred square foot. Building that's in the. The CCNRs basically, but of the county. And it'll be have a sixteen-foot side wall versus a fourteen-foot so that I can get a door in big enough to put my equipment inside.
Any of your neighbors object?
No, I just, we just had a, it's the, um, the road. What are they called? The road district. We had a road district meeting on first and everybody's asking me, when are you getting started? When you get started? So no, they haven't.
Okay.
And all the letters were sent out, so.
They'll be all right. Thank you.
I would say yes.
Any questions?
Question. This is for personal use, no commercial storage.
No.
Got a lot of stuff.
Yeah, my sister and I own a boat together, so it's going. Equipment.
Okay, at this time, I'll ask you to have a seat and we'll open up to public comment. Would anybody in the audience care to make a comment on the application? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. I'll bring it back to the board for motion.
Move approval, second.
Motion to approve, uh, second by Fox to approve the conditional use based on the findings of fact. Accessory structure is going to be. Twenty-six eighty-eight square feet with sixteen-foot by sidewalls. Mailings went out. It was passed at the planning commission, five zero. There's ingress and egress. No off-road parkings required, no refuse required. Utilities are present. Screening is present on the east side. No signs required. It's a private residence, et cetera, et cetera. With that, is any more discussion? Roll call vote please Patty.
Dan?
Yes.
Wanda?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Motion passes. You're good to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you know, Mr. Eichoff.
Keith Eichhoff representing Drake Development, one sixty-one Sleepy Hollow Drive in Yankton. Uh, this was a project that was passed in two thousand eight. Uh, we put the brakes on it when the recession hit in oh eight. Then in later, we had an opportunity to purchase Chuck Light's old property, that two and a half acres. We knocked that house down, cleared the trees out, graded. And cut an access road, um, parallel to Highway fifty-two to give us better access to that property. Uh, the rest of the plan is as it was approved in oh eight. We finally, we've been seeking a builder for the condos. We finally have an agreement with K Construction. Jason's here and they intend to. Uh, start footings on the first condo as soon as we can get the utilities in place and get a building permit and and proceed.
Doing eight, eight new.
Yeah, there's eight duplexes. They're ranch style side by sides. They're not, they're not up. They're ranch style house.
Roughly housing for how many people roughly?
Well, it'll be a total of, um. Sixteen in that one acre on lot one.
And this is where again?
It would be directly west of DJ Reynolds. Used to be the old, uh, was a wood go-kart track there.
Chuck Lights proper.
Chuck Light, yeah.
Yeah.
Like I said, the house next to it where Chuck used to live.
Yep.
We tore that down, cleaned it up and then cut an access road in front of there because the old access was portage path across the back, which is kind of a narrow, small road. So we intend to put a twenty-four-foot paved road coming off of Clark Trail and and into this property.
I don't have any more questions.
Anyone? Yep, have a seat and we'll open up to public comment. If they care to make a public comment on this application. Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. Bring it back to the board for discussion.
I'll move approval of, uh, Mr. Eichhoff's conditional use permit request.
Got a motion?
Still reading down.
Was there a motion?
There's a motion for approval.
I'll second.
Motion and a second by Sherry to approve based on findings of fact. Further discussion.
Just out of curiosity, how much are they going to run? Ballpark. I'm sorry? Okay, okay. I'm not holding you to it. I'm just curious.
So. My only concern, I guess, from. Just for cleaning things up. Are we, we're looking at approving. These all on on a single lot.
Yeah, lot one. There, you know, there's five one acre lots behind it, which two through six that are part of the CUP. There are one acre lots.
Yeah, and there was a CUP years ago, but it's obviously been a long time, so re-applied. So this was approved before.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Yes, he'll have to meet all the setbacks with each building permit. And he's addressed, we had questions about the sewage and he's addressed that. That might have been put up part of the conditions. At the planning and zoning meeting. They have to pull the minutes out.
Big projects like this, I'd I'd personally almost rather see a rezone to a planned unit development when you're doing, you know, I know how. Nobody likes a rezone, but. That might have been better for next.
Well, it has to be five acres for that. What was this approved under before? Do you recall?
Was it early two, or is it two thousand five or two thousand?
How many acres is in lot one?
Cause what, I mean, what is this even under for conditional uses?
Your modest density there, weren't you?
We are two. And the reason I add, so if you, oh, is it in sixteen?
Sixtons or maybe per house. Two units in one unit. There's eight units.
Well, I got that.
And I would take that as.
Yeah, by five.
One multi-family dwelling. For a CUP.
But but this isn't being subdivided though. Isn't this all just one lot that you're building? A bunch of them like that, you know, there's no, it's not, it's never going to fit perfectly with anything what, cause you, what you're doing is a little different. Now, that's why I mentioned the planned unit development, but. I think it does meet the multifamily. It's just multiple ones of it, you know. In my opinion, but.
Doesn't there have to be one acre per unit?
I just want to be clean on how we're doing it.
Well, I.
Unless, unless it's rezoned.
I I think. It was probably eight months or something ago. Gary came in, this might have been when you first started, uh, they came in and the commission decided. As long as it met the setbacks, they could build as many structures on. The lot. Were you, were you here when they did that? That was probably right when, right when you started? And. You know, we did that, uh, for, it was for the mother-in-law house. And so I guess that was the precedence that was set.
If you look at fifteen oh three erection of more than one principal structure on a lot is what I would consider this, I guess. Does any district, okay, more than one structure, housing are permitted or permissible principal use may be erected on a single lot. Provided that the art and other requirements of the ordinance shall be met for each structure as though it was on.
And with that mother-in-law house, it was a two-acre lot, so that second home was on a, a single acre and it met both the setbacks and the lot size.
Right.
So are are you guys?
Or it was on an acre and they were half acres. I can't remember.
Don't we, um, well, so what do you guys saying that each one of these should have a set, an acre to it? Is that what, is that, I I'm just trying to, trying to understand.
That's what fifteen oh three states. So if you were on, uh, Ag District and you wanted two homes on one lot, you had to have a minimum of forty acres. If you're in R one, you have to have. Ten acres. If you're in R two, you have to have two acres.
I don't necessarily. Agree that way. Provided that young. Met because when we get that mother-in-law, they're right next to each other and one.
On two acres.
No, well, yeah, but.
One half.
They met the setback from the theoretical lot.
So is this, are you saying this doesn't meet? Me, cause Bill's telling us it meets the setbacks requirements, right?
It probably.
They're going to file a building permit for each one of those and they're going to have to meet the setback on each one of them.
Yeah.
And I'm confident.
You're saying they meet if they meet the setback, but. I got how far they're set back, but. What's. Concerning me is that. I thought they had to have an acre.
And we just went forward because this was, this is how this was approved before.
Right.
And so we just. Reapplied the, you know, basically the same application since they had approved.
I think as long as the lot itself is bigger than an acre. Which is the requirement and it meets the setbacks, it should be fine.
What would keep me from building? Eight single, single-family homes on one lot.
Your setbacks. If if you, if you could meet the setbacks, I don't think that would be an issue. And the only reason he's probably, if those were single-family houses, he wouldn't be the need be in here. But I believe the reason he's in here is because.
Well, I think you'd have to be in here because there's three too many.
You can't build two single fam- or eight single-family homes on one lot.
If you, if the lot was big enough, I couldn't.
Well, we're talking a five-acre lot. Not a sixteen-acre lot.
What zone is this in?
R two.
So it's got to have an acre, it's an acre.
An acre.
Per house.
Where, where does it say an acre per house?
I'm sorry? They don't use the word variance anymore. No, no, I know, but people get in trouble with that. Well, that was in two thousand eight. We're now in two thousand twenty-one.
Interpretation of the ordinance changes with different people.
See, that's not in here, is it? That original?
I think the packet was.
So less, less than a quarter of a mile. From here. We approved three condominiums. To one that had what? Six, six or eight. Six or eight families living in each one. And that was a.
Were they all one structure?
Three, three structures.
See, and that's, that's where I can maybe. You could put that many people in a solid building on that lot. And because you want to split them up.
Yeah.
It's.
Yeah, those three high-rise condos that are next to me now. Yeah, but it's there. Here that's per condo, there's like four units on two acres.
For that I can understand, you know.
Did you make a motion, Don?
Yes, there's a motion and and second on the floor.
I think it's a good addition to the area.
You know, and one thing looking at this too, fifteen oh three talks about principal uses and structures. And we're into a. CUP for this. So that fifteen oh three technically doesn't apply. I mean, I can certainly appreciate that if you. You could make this in one building, one big apartment building and have the same thing on one lot.
Well, this is, uh. Every, uh. Meeting that I go to involving the community talks about the absence of housing and. We're not getting, uh, an abundance of new lots available to build houses on and. To me, this is a great example of a. Situation that helps our community grow. With the price that you're suggesting that they're going to cost, they'll obviously be, uh, nice-looking buildings. Uh, I don't know about your governance and. Who takes care of the lawns and stuff, but I expect it. That'll be taken care of. So, so what we have to come to grips with is how it fits into.
Right. And the, the reason I guess it. It brings up concern with me is the campground by Lake Alexis. It's going to have several homes on a single lot and we were. We were trying to hold them to each home had to be. Had to be if theoretically plotted out on its own lot, had to have the, the setbacks and the acreage sites or the.
I, I, I don't know where it says that in our zoning and there are a lot of lots that have multiple houses on that. You know, I.
I think they exist all over. It's the, the new ones.
I don't know.
And I think this is a different animal though. These aren't principal.
Isn't this the whole purpose of the zoning and having lot sizes? Not, yeah, we want to, more people to move to Yankton, so let's build houses. We don't care about the lot size.
I think that that mainly does with minimum lot size is you don't want structures on really small parcels that can't.
Point six two five. According to Mr. Calculator, it's one, two houses on a lot point six two five.
But that, that is all one big lot, right? That's correct. How big is that lot?
Five acres.
So it's five acres. So a smaller lot, smaller than a half acre, you have difficulty with the drain fields and septic systems and stuff like that. When you have five acres.
And sixteen houses.
Well. You know, I, to, to, back to Don's point, as we, the county approved those three condos, when was that? About three, four years ago?
Oh, no, it was longer ago than that.
No, I was on the planning commission with the first two and then the last.
Built a long time ago, the last two.
Were built more recently.
Were they on separate lots?
What's that? I think all three of them were on the, were on. I think all three of them were on, weren't they all on the same one?
No, one's on one lot, the other two I think are on the same one.
So I mean, I hate to see a good project not pass because, you know. Each one of those doesn't have an acre to it. I, I don't see where it says in our zoning that each structure has to have. A set amount of size, you know, to it. You know. If he was building one of these on a single lot, yes, but he's got enough room to build them.
Go ahead, Sheri.
But I, but I think that, um, is it fifteen oh three that you read, Joe?
Yes.
And, and that, that applies because of this, because if I, if I have a. Two acre lot and if I can cram ten homes on there, but I can still meet the outside setbacks. It's defeating the purpose of the two acre zone where you are trying to control the density. Of the population and I think that's what fifteen oh three is about. Uh, if you ought to own a quarter section of land out, out in the country, you can put seven homes on there. Now you can put all those homes side by side. But they all meet the acreage area. So I think in this case, since these homes are all separate. And the reason they're here for a CUP is because they're multifamily, they're duplexes. But I do believe each duplex needs to meet both the setbacks from the lot lines and the acreage. That's just how the ordinance is written. We might not like it and we can certainly change it or we can rezone the area, but right now, I think that's right.
I, I disagree. With, with the, uh, the other units that the county has permitted in the past, it wasn't that way, so.
There's been a lot of things done in the past that I don't agree with.
Well, I don't, I don't know if we're gonna get it through an impasse, so let's, let's just call the question and see where we end up.
I agree with that.
Yep, okay. Vote, call vote please, Patty.
Don? Question is approved it or not?
Yes.
Sheri?
No.
Wanda?
No.
Yes.
No.
So what guidance are we giving these guys? You, would you approve this if he rezoned it to a PUD? I mean, that's about his only option. If he wants to, if he wants to do this, if you have five acres, you could. Rezone it to a planned unit development.
I don't know.
Do we have some, do we have some guidance for him? I mean.
That sounds like a bill question or a Gary question.
He's gonna come back to us, I guess. We're the ones, he went to the planning commission. Yeah, come, come, come on up to here so we can hear what you're saying. Trailer park after trailer park going in down there on top of each other. Uh, you know, there certainly ought to be, you know, I, I guess that's own commercials, so it doesn't fall into the one acre.
Lakeside commercial.
But you know, yeah, I mean, you have a five acre next to me that's got forty trailers on it. Um, you know, you got spring water, you got the two that went right next to the barn. I mean, there's, they're going up all over the place. And to me, this is a much better use of that ten acres of ground than, than.
Well, I don't disagree.
That's what I'm saying. There, there must be a way of whether, and maybe it's a planned unit development. I don't know, but, um, I mean, it, it went through. The last time under the same conditions, but.
I would agree that, that it's much more aesthetically pleasing than a camp resort area. Or a trailer park, as you've referred to it.
Sure.
I'm just, my concern is, is eight, well, sixteen households on five acres. That's my concern. In, under the current way it's zoned. And I've only been here since January, so I cannot tell you what's happened three years ago or five years ago or whatever, but. That's just my opinion.
I'd agree, uh, with that, we're not gonna get anywhere. You know, if anybody here that supported it has a way to make it work within the ordinance, I'm all in favor of it. I. Do not enjoy stopping people from progress.
You know, if he.
But work with Bill and let's move on.
If he, if he came back and he, you, nobody would have an issue if he had one of those for each acre.
I'm sorry, one of those what?
If he built five of those on, one on each acre, he, he'd be fine, but.
Then you meet fifteen oh three, the yard and other requirements of the ordinance shall be met for each structure as though it were on an individual lot.
So what, what I'm saying is, is we should give this guy some guidance, so he walks away here with a plan where he can succeed.
And contact him, we're gonna move on to the next.
This was brought forward by Bill, plus the planning and zoning five and O and came to us.
Actually, I think what Mr. Cogling said is they took the two thousand eight application, resubmitted it, thought it was a go. If it was approved in two thousand eight. Although I understand in two thousand eight, there was a downturn in the economy and the housing market crashed and. Probably why it wasn't built at that time, but I think that. That is the problem, at least for me.
Right. And like I said, not, I don't enjoy.
Yeah.
Discouraging that and maybe we can come up with a, something that'll work, but according to the ordinance as it's written, I can't support that.
Just one last question. Has the ordinance been changed any since two thousand and eight in this area?
I think we've allowed for larger accessory structures. That's a CUP and that's it.
That's the individual actions I'm talking about as the ordinance changed. But because. Approved for this guy eight years ago was under the same law that we rejected it for today.
Was it approved erroneously? The question, just because it was approved doesn't mean it.
It wasn't built.
In fact, after the meeting, I'm wide open if someone wants to show me in this ordinance how it meets it. I'm wide open.
I'm just.
After the meeting.
My shoes.
They get a motion to come out of board of adjustment and into.
I was.
You have to, uh, all okay, did you do that after the vote call, that everything?
Sorry.
Two, it was two, three.
I know, I haven't. Okay.
What are we missing?
Just go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Negative motion to come out of board of adjustment and into regular session.
I would move to come out of the board of adjustment into regular session.
Second.
Motioned by Fox, second by Clemish to come up out of board of adjustment and into regular session. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 We are now in regular session.
Gonna talk about ambulances.
Okay, item twelve.
Hello, everybody.
Hey, Steve.
Alright, um. Kind of a, uh. But I wanted to talk to you about first, as I put it in the, in the little memo that I submitted with some scheduling issues that have kinda come up. And, um, we may have found a, a solution. I wanted to chat with you guys about it first, it's a little, um. Anyhow, what are concerned, what our problem is over the last period of time is that, um. We heard, we were having problems getting part-time employees to work between, uh, work our day shifts, Monday through Friday. The, those are prime hours of those individuals working their regular jobs, their full-time jobs or going to school. So what we've been doing in the past, um, year, there's been. Plugging full-time staff into those, into those holes to fills, to fill the schedule. We currently, um, have two candidates for our open paramedic position that are both very good candidates. So we, as a collective group of the medics, we got thinking, why not? Think about bringing both full-time paramedics on. And alleviating the overtime or the extra overtime, I call it, the extra overtime. Additional overtime that the medics are getting while they're, because they're filling in the part-time slots. I know that this is kind of hard to maybe grasp, but let me try to explain it to you and, and. We have thirty, three hundred and sixty, three hundred and thirty-six hours of. Of hours that we have to cover during the day shifts from Sunday through, through Saturday. So those hours are already budgeted. Um, there, some of them are budgeted and when I do my budget, some of them are budgeted in the part-time slot. Some are budgeted into the full-time slot. So what we're really doing is just kinda moving some of that hours and money over into where, what we.
Let's cut to the chase. How much extra is it gonna cost the county?
Okay, cut to the chase.
To, to have full-time employees with benefits.
Right. What's gonna happen is you're gonna have, um, uh. The full-time medics that are working overtime to plug the part-time people, that's gonna go away. So you're gonna be saving overtime money there. You're gonna be using up, um, part-time. Budgeted salaries to pay for the extra for, for the new full-time position, so that's an even wash. The amount of money that we're gonna save, um, in overtime for that extra overtime, I truly believe will pay. Um, for the benefits.
Have you penciled it out?
I have penciled it out and it works out on paper, but you know how that. So.
So you're gonna have no part-time people?
No, no, we'll still have to have part-time people. Um, the part-time people will be working, uh, shifts during the, um.
Weekend.
During the weekends and at night. So we're nights and weekends don't seem to be the biggest hurdle. It's the daytime, Monday through Friday. And if you, we have two crews working, uh, both of them, if you will, are, are, there's two crews working day. At twelve hours slots, so it's twenty-four hours for first call, twenty-four hours for second call, that's seven days a week. And then we do the same thing for nights. So we're covering a great amount of hours. And a lot of those are with part-time, but right now we're having trouble with that, the date.
Do you ever, uh, have volunteer staff?
At one time we did.
Okay, is that something, I know a lot of the smaller towns, they, that's what they survive on. Is that something we could? Look into doing volunteers?
No, I can't even get people to work for me part-time. So you're trying.
Let alone for free.
Is not gonna, is not gonna be the big ticket. The problem with the volunteers, there's, there's a shortfall in.
They don't.
Small organisms in small, small communities are having problems getting volunteers.
And they don't show up.
Right, yeah, and they have, they have a hard time getting volunteers. We're getting a hard time finding part-time people. For a vast number of reasons. I, when I looked for, uh, to fill our open paramedic slot, we did, I was considered national. I did, it was on. Indeed, it was on, um, mountain or monster, uh, monster, whatever, monster. Inc, no, whatever, that monster, um.
Job site company.
Yeah, that, 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 that site. And then, um, we had it posted on the website, on all of the websites, state website. We had, um, we actually sent, um, people, one, people to the, to the, uh, communities that are, or the classes that are. Um, the paramedic classes, we sent brochures to them. We. The only thing that we didn't do was hire a headhunter to find us a paramedic and we got two applicants. Um, both of those applicants are just graduating from school. What we found was a lot of the applicants. Uh, or a lot of the, the paramedic students are already spoken to, they're already working someplace. So, uh. That's, that's where we're just having a hard time finding medical staff. Everybody else, it's, it's just a problem, um, with EMS, nursing, physicians, the whole thing.
Well, Steve, I mean, really, it's, it's a problem in, in every department and every business. Nobody. It, it feels they're adequately staffed and I just, I guess I, I just have a real issue with continuing to expand. Government and adding position after position after position. I, you know, I know you, you'd think going, getting rid of some part-time, going to full-time. Would pencil out, but it never does. Once you add in, you know, the salary and the benefits and the retirement and all of that, I, I. I just don't know if this is, this is what we need to do. Is there a way we could look at maybe not having? I, I mean, I see down here further, you know, we're looking at an agreement to have a standby ambulance. Uh, for the state.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe we don't do those types of things and then we can, you know, staff it a little differently, you know, you know what I'm saying? Well, I.
I would.
I, I don't have, I don't have the solution, but yeah.
If there's a way that we can do a better job at staffing, I will, I will certainly be open to that.
I mean, our, our position too is, you know, our, our, you, you know how the county works. We don't have a huge amount of tax. Dollars and we, we gotta draw the line somewhere about continuing to expand, cause I guarantee you, everybody, every department that we have. Could use three more people.
Everybody wants another person and I understand that, but I, I have. A abundance of overtime that I have been working at trying to reduce for years and I'm just trying to chip away. And get rid of that overtime because that, that's killer.
I think the difference is although it's FTE, you're not looking to add hours to your department. You're re, you're replacing hours.
No, I'm not asking to add it, I'm just asking to shuffle the ones that I currently have full-time to part-time. Yes.
Well, that's adding an FTE though.
Can you fill your part-time shortfall with one full-time employee?
That's what I'm asking for.
Well, you, I heard you talking about two.
I have, I have a current opening right now, one that's already budgeted.
Okay.
Okay, that one will fill.
And then you want.
Then I'd ask for this, a, a new second, a new.
Okay, well, I think that's.
We, we are budgeted for six full-time.
I think where the skip in logic came is if you've already got one open one, you're not really asking for two. You're asking for one to replace the part-time.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
What's the cost gonna be to the county?
What's that?
What, what would the cost be roughly to hire the additional person?
That one extra, if you will, or one additional, um, would be, I would consider it minimal on night and I'm working at cabinet within the budget. I truly think that if we, because of, there, there's, we're budgeted a certain amount. And then those new hires are gonna come in at a lower rate. We will save overtime in doing this and I think we'll be, um, it will be a wash. Very close and the, the, uh, I, am I gonna be over budget? No, I do not believe I will be over budget. One of the other little things is that money that, that, some of the grant money that you received. Um, through the COVID thing, will, you can actually use that money. I believe to pay for this person for this, the rest of this year and next year.
And then what happens?
Well, it'll still be all within the budget, but I'm saying that you could use that money and then you, you know, reshuffle some of that other salary.
So how many full-time people do you have and how many part-time do you have right now?
Right now I have, uh, six, six full-time paramedics plus me and the, and, uh, uh. Billing lady and then there are.
So, so.
Twenty.
So not, is it?
Three, twenty-three part-timers.
So eight full-time, so you said six. Eight and then how many part-time?
Twenty-three, he said.
So you're looking to go to ten full-time?
No, eight.
Eight.
Well, you said there was one open and you added to add the other one.
Right.
So it'd be.
Six, he's budgeted for six.
But one, one, one position is open right now.
Right, and I, and I counted that as part of the six.
Oh, I got, I got. Okay, so you go to nine full-time and then are you gonna drop part-time positions or leave those open then?
Well, they'll still be open. They, 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 they're counted. Do a, uh, self-schedule. That's one of the other things. We're new to self-scheduling situations, so people get to pick the days that they wanna work. If we up that, make a, a regular schedule where they, we pick when they wanna work, then we're, we'll lose them. Um, plus then we probably are gonna be in a situation where we have to pay them, then, uh.
So you're talking seven plus you, plus the billing lady. So you, it's not nine. I don't count the billing lady.
What's an employee though?
Well, I know, but she's not going out on calls, I'm guessing.
We still pay her.
I got that, but she's in the budget, but we're not counting her budget-wise. So you're just saying add one more, cause you're already there.
They're already there, yeah.
Do you go out on calls?
What's that?
Do you go out on calls?
Oh, yeah, that's why I'm behind this last week, the last couple of weeks.
In the last month, what's an average? Average, what's, what is a, one of the higher number of hours? Average, what's, what is a, one of the higher number of hours a full-time employee's worked overtime?
In uh, um, in total, like scheduled and unscheduled? Um, I have that.
I mean, how, you know, full-time employee, are we talking they're working fifty hours, sixty hours?
Yeah, what we try to do is put them on a thirty-six, forty-eight rotation, um, and then they get eight hours of overtime every. Two weeks.
Right.
So that's sixteen hours a month, but then you add in all this other stuff. So you're, you're probably looking at um.
When you're talking the other stuff, you're talking the time and a half?
The time and a half, other stuff. When I say time and a half, when I say other stuff, I mean, um, call-in. Covering over, covering for vacation time, covering for some, the, the, the individual that's, that is the open position, covering for the, the. The thirty-six, thirty-six hours a week, just to, to, to cover the part-time medics that they're getting, so they're getting. There's an additional thirty-six to forty-eight, well, it's just for math, say thirty-six hours of overtime that will. By hiring the other person will, will eliminate.
You're paying enough overtime that you would justify one position.
Yeah, I think our overtime right now is, is equivalent of like sixty-eight thousand a year. So uh, not that we're gonna be absorbing that, but what I'm trying to do is cut that back. I do not like overtime, our medics don't like to work a bunch of overtime. They're used to doing. You know, they understand that they have to work so much overtime, that's just part of the EMS world. But um to have them working fifty, you know, eighty hours a week um. Right now, that, that's a lot.
And I'm guessing it's usually a handful or a couple, you only have a handful, but one or two people that pick up most of the overtime.
Yes, yes. And some of them, they do, they pick it up not because they want it, it's because they, um, I hear this all the time, although anyone else is grabbing it, so.
Right. Are they gonna leave? Are they gonna leave if they don't have that overtime income?
The, the thing is, is there's a, there's a um, um, I have a little, I have a little uh.
Chart?
Chart, if you will, it's kind of an illustration that we're putting together, actually trying to put together this afternoon when we were talking about this. Um, and I did send this to Sherry, so she's got it. Um, the first line is a six medic rotation of the thirty-six, forty-eight, thirty-six. Our, our standard scheduling rotation. And the red mark is the, what we consider the extra overtime. Stuff that's not budgeted, so.
Okay, when you, not to interrupt, but I'm gonna, when you did the fifty thousand dollars annually, did you include um the county's? Contribution to retirement, the county's contribution to health.
Just used, I think, we just used fifty thousand as a number to kind of illustrate. That, that each medic has, each time when I do the budget, every medic knows. What they're basically gonna make in that the year, kind of like their base salary. And on that, in that base salary, they get their hours, their call time, um, their holiday pay, that kind of thing. So at fifty thousand, that's in their benefits, that's all within that, that.
Fifty?
Well.
The benefits aren't.
No, like I said, we just picked fifty.
I got that. Did Mr. Cowman use his magic computer to calculate how much the benefits would cost? That's what I was asking.
I guess I'm. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not stating myself correctly.
So I got the fifty thousand base, got that.
Okay. Yes, when I do the budget, when they give the budget, I have all that factored in. You know, of course, they don't know what that is, I guess. I just give them what their annual gross income. You know, but what we're trying to, trying to illustrate here is that by do, going to the seven medics, we will, we will decrease our.
Overtime.
Extra overtime, yes.
Do, do you have a number? I see you have this red bar and that one, do you have it? An estimate of how much will?
No, I didn't.
Save.
It's, it's not a, this is an illustration, not necessarily a graph.
Well, yeah, and like to.
You know, with all the, with all the numbers.
Well, I think it's pretty simple. If we're currently paying thirty-six to forty-eight hours of overtime.
And, and more.
But insurance and healthcare and.
Right, I'm just saying.
All, all that, that's not represented here. Sure, there'll be less overtime hours.
What I'm saying is this red box doesn't matter. If we're, if we're paying.
Perhaps we could.
Full-time person's worth of overtime. On average, every week or every month, all we need to look at is. That base salary, which is gonna be fairly equivalent to the part-timers. And does the benefits for a single full-time employee outweigh the cost of time and a half overtime at? Call it thirty to forty hours a week. Get your calculator.
Maybe Patty knows what it costs for benefits, for one person.
And then there's the hidden benefits of running people until they decide to quit and leave and.
Cause the part-time, you know, they don't get any benefits.
No.
Part-time shouldn't even be part of this conversation though. It's, it's the number of hours of overtime and the cost of benefits.
Yep.
So, so one question, this is Sherry that I have, is I didn't notice this topic on the agenda. Did I, do I have an outdated agenda?
No, and you're actually correct in that. This should be brought up on.
Okay, so, so. Yep, so what I would. So what I would suggest is, what questions do you have? And then at the next meeting, Steve's can come back when it's on the agenda, cause we can't approve this tonight.
Right.
So when he comes back, or he can get the information this week and you have it, so when we do discuss it. We're a little more um focused on being able to make a decision. And I do agree with Joe. The, it's the benefits that need to be taken out of the overtime that's saved. And, and Steve commented that we spend sixty-seven to six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight thousand a year in overtime right now, so. If you're paying someone fifty thousand, thirty percent is benefit, so another fifteen thousand is benefit. That's just a ballpark. That is pretty close, so we need to save fifteen thousand dollars in overtime. Um, if this person is paid similar to a part-time person. So if we can get our questions to Steve tonight. Um, then in a couple of weeks, we can make a decision.
I would agree with Sherry.
Well then, shoot, okay, I'm not saying shoot about that. I do understand that. But what, what Sherry just said is my next item, we may not be able to make, make a.
The bid. Yeah, I think we are gonna have to stick to.
Well, see, I guess when I saw that, it, cause I submitted this, I just thought that this was all, since it's all there.
What's the Department of Health agreement that you have on here? Is that the, the standby?
Yeah.
Okay.
What it is, and with, we can skip with, are you, just before we get to that. This ambulance bid, um, topic I can't discuss tonight. Put a bit ambulance on.
What, Department of Health Agreement hyphen ambulance is what's on.
Why don't you give a quick overview of what you're after, but we can't take action on it tonight anyway? Really on anything except for Department of Health Agreement.
Okay.
We can't, we can't actually take action on it.
But we can put it on the agenda for next time.
Right.
Okay, well, what they, what, basically, in a nutshell, what the deal is, is having the same situation that, that um. But we currently, all I was asking for is to go ahead and we have an ambulance that we are um. Gonna be budgeting to purchase next um, next year. And because of the chip thing, all the vendors are telling me what we need to do is, is to um, kind of secure the chassis. So they can get a chat, so they can order the chest, so um.
So you're just looking for going out to forbid though right now? We don't need to make a decision.
We have a hundred and twenty now, we have a hundred and twenty in the, in the accumulation fund now. You guys will probably gonna, I think, add another twenty or so, so we'll have about a hundred and forty total. The chassis is gonna be around thirty, um, that will all come back in, in um, in the bid.
Yeah, I think you're okay to go forward with the bid and then we'll.
Well, I have to get that the, you or Sherry need to sign the bid to make it, it has to be. The bid sheet has to be signed by the county commission.
See, I, and I don't think we can do that.
Tonight, because it's.
Yep, okay.
Let's go back to the Department of Health Agreement.
Okay, the Department of Health has, has been working on this since the pandemic began, and what they're basically asking for. Is to, for us to um, enter into an agreement. That when they have a vaccination site, I, it just says vaccination site what the agreement is. Whether that's a flu vaccination site or a COVID nineteen vaccination site, there would pay us a um. Pay us to have the name, or not an ambulance, but a ALS provider onsite with equipment that handle. Um, and that a, an emergency specifically, um, would be uh, any a, allergic reaction. They're willing to pay a hundred and fifty dollars an hour for us to, to stand there or to be there. Plus, if we, we travel outside of the um county, um. It will, they'll pay nine dollars and fifty cents a mile.
That's just one person that's.
That's just one person, they're not requiring an ambulance, no.
So you're just gonna show up in your regular car? Here I am.
Yeah, we do it all.
And they, and they, and they.
Vehicle that does that.
And they pay you?
Yes.
Is there a state rate or is that just a negotiated?
That is a, the rate, they, what they do is they got all these rates from all these different ambulance services and. We submitted ours, they submitted, they kind of gathered them up and said, this is what their rates. Hundred and fifty dollars an hour. Our current rate right now for a, for an ambulance is a hundred. So I don't know when, when or where this is going to be, be used.
So does that money go to the county or does it go to the person that goes there?
Goes to county, they get paid the rent and rate.
Well, I would move to approve the Department of Health Agreement.
Second.
And then um.
Okay, so we have a motion by Fox, second by Clemish, to approve uh self-coated Department of Health contract. In the amount, do you have an amount on here?
No, I didn't.
Hundred and fifty bucks an hour.
It is a hundred and fifty. Nine fifty a mile.
Nine fifty a mile.
Outside of service area, which is basic outside the town, so.
Is that, is that what they charge us if we have to do an ambulance or if somebody has to drive?
No, no, the thing is, is that, that's, that's um, if we had an ambulance or if we had a provider sitting at that vaccination site. Within the county and they needed an ambulance, they would, we would respond, transport the patient, build their insurance. Vaccinate, uh, the rate is only, that, that is only for that, the person that's.
Motion and a second, all those in favor? And a opposed, motion passes by zero.
Okay, the one thing, this is a doc sign, document, can I sign it? Or just, do we need to get one of the, the chairman?
The agreement?
It's agreement, yeah.
I have no.
What do we do at the school?
Where's it at?
It's on my computer.
The school, what do we do with this? We have an agreement with like the school and different activities, correct? What do we normally do with activities?
I think you just usually sign your own.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, alright.
Thanks, Steve.
And then the last thing is just an FYI, is that we're doing a um. First responder class, room to medical response course, that um, it's been funded. Or we got donations from Yankton Area Health. Bear Foundation and um, Yankton Thrive. Now, each gave two thousand dollars to, for us to put on this class, and so it will be covered all, the class. Uh, it's totally covered by, by. So, uh, part of the thing is I have to do a little PR, so there's my first PR form right there.
Good deal.
Oh, you mean for the donors?
For the donors.
Okay.
Well, thank you to those organizations.
Okay, well, thank you guys very much for your time. Sorry that uh, we wasted a lot of it, so.
No, we'll save time next time then.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Think the Veteran Service Officer.
Okay, item thirteen, appoint Veterans Service Officer.
So if we appoint him, does he get sworn in? Nope, do we just appoint him? Kind of anticlimactic then.
Dan and I have interviewed uh, two candidates and. Our mutual decision has been that uh, we would recommend to the commission that uh, Cody be hired. Uh, as the permanent Veterans Service Officer. And Don, we also mentioned to make his date retroactive when he initially started.
That's right.
It was at May twenty-fourth. You know, if you guys are okay with that, it kind of seems foolish to make him go through the.
What?
They put, they made uh.
No. Your light's not on.
I don't know if you can make him retroactive, cause you had someone in that position technically.
Yeah, him.
No.
Okay.
No, technically.
Okay, well, you know, the, our, our thought was.
Tell him he retired or quit.
Yeah.
Well, you can't back pay somebody like that.
No, no, I'm not talking about back pay, but doesn't his position have a, is it a six-month probationary period? And are we gonna, he, he's been here, you know, four months, are we gonna make him do another six months?
I just make the motion to wait to change the probation.
Okay, that's kind of what I was getting at.
As part of the.
Okay. Yeah, I'll change my motion.
Well, technically you didn't make one, you just made a recommendation that you'd interviewed, so we're, we got a wide, clean slate here.
I would move uh, that the commission approved the appointment. Cody as our Veteran Service Officer. And that uh, the four months of service that he's uh. Been to or done uh, will apply towards these six months probationary period.
Okay, so I'm just gonna clarify, I've got motion to appoint Cody Mangle um, to the Veteran Service Officer position. With.
Credit for four months.
Well, I was gonna say with, with his probation beginning retroactively at May twenty-fourth, four months worth of.
And at his current salary?
At current salary?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
Okay, we've got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Kerry, second by Loos, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed, motion pass. Congratulations.
Speech.
Thanks, Cody, you're doing a great job.
Thank you for the opportunity for the last four months to learn how to do my job. Um, I greatly appreciate it and hopefully uh, I can continue going as hard as I have been. So, thank you for your vote confidence.
Thanks, good deal.
Thank you. Take a five-minute break.
What?
We take a five-minute break?
I think that'd be a fabulous idea.
By Clemish, second by Fox for five-minute break.
Aye.
Motion passes. Motion passes. No, thanks. Okay. Can I get a motion to come back into regular session, please?
Back into regular session.
Motion.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 And you opposed, we're back in regular session. Yes, I have, I believe that'll work right now. Okay, so we're gonna move, jump to item seventeen uh. Bids for basement, Jeff's been sitting back there patiently, so let's move on with that.
Not sure if you guys still had uh the bids from last week, I had them handed out.
I sent them to you, they should be in your pocket.
Yep, they all got scanned in the package, Jeff.
Thank you.
They actually are because they've been painted over.
Yeah, they've been touched up.
And replaced several times, and they're all different, so I guess you hand them around.
Been an ongoing problem that started long before I got here. With the foundation leaking and we've finally been able to get some some qualified bids, I think, to take care of the situation.
So you have three bids here?
Yes.
Do you have a recommendation, Jeff?
After looking at everything, uh my recommendation recommendation would be to go with Dakota Basement Systems. Because they're looking at actually putting a membrane down. Onto the wall after they cleaned it. Backfilling, uh they've got it slated in there if if there's any repairs that need to be done to the landscaping. And to the lawn, they've they've gone, I think, above and beyond. Make sure that when they're done, it's as close to what it was.
Well, there actually looks like they're putting in two membranes.
Right, yes, yes. A membrane on the wall and then one to slope the water away from the foundation.
Sure, so they're doing twice as much for.
Half for.
For half as much money.
For a quarter as much.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, entertain a motion.
Move approval of uh Jeff's recommendation for basement, Dakota Basement Systems to repair the. Basement of the government center.
For the sum of nine thousand six hundred eighty-two dollars and six cents?
Yes, thank you.
I would second.
Nine thousand six eighty-two point zero six. Second by Fox. To receive the bid for Dakota Basement Systems in the amount of nine thousand six hundred eighty-two dollars and six cents, all those in favor? And you opposed, motion passes five zero.
Thank you, Jeff, for all your work on this.
Thanks, Jeff, thanks for sticking.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll jump back up to marijuana licensing ordinance, so this is um. Just to be clear, we won't take any action on this, this is gonna be discussion tonight. I think we've pretty much had most of the discussion, it's just been put into a per format, so. I don't know if we want to start at the top and go down or if anyone want has any concerns, comments, otherwise.
The the only one I have is is number twenty-two that says practitioner means a physician who's licensed. Um when I was at District Three and they went over that, um they said a physician is any MDDO, CNP or PA. And I don't know if item number twenty-two, when it calls out a specific as a physician, if that is really in. Really the intent of that and may maybe we could add some verbiage or Deb uh. Your advice, because I I that's supposed to mean um nurse practitioners and physicians assistants as well, correct?
Okay, so what I would suggest is we just go through. The way it goes, those definitions were taken from the state.
Statute.
So.
Okay.
If there's if there's something you want me to double check on, like that one, I certainly will. But I'm not comfortable.
Sure, I'll make a photocopy of this.
Doing, I mean, I'll just go back to the statute, because.
Sure.
Some, what's happening now is everybody's. Everybody's doing some of their own interpretation and I don't like to interpret if it's part of a statute.
Sure.
It's gonna be whatever the definition is in the statute, I don't think it's for us to change. So I'll mark that one, but I would I would like to start with just. Let's just go through it, it's gonna be easier for Patty and I. And then I'll note anything that you want me to check on and get back to everybody, so.
I would agree with that.
I would serve that.
Does this help, are we talking about the license itself or the order? I mean, I I guess I'm not.
It's a licensing ordinance, just like when we do an ordinance that allows for us to. Issue liquor licenses, this ordinance is gonna allow the county to issue medical cannabis. Establishment licenses, so it's it's still an ordinance.
So it's a license, the actual license, just like individuals fill out for liquor, well beverage. It's still gonna be that kind of a one page.
For you, yes, it'll be a form and they'll mark off things, yes.
So definitions are right out of the state, you're gonna check on practitioner definition, is there any other? Concerns with any of the definitions?
No.
Okay. So we can go to what, section three, established license required, um this is. Right out of the state, I believe.
Yes, other than a couple places made some changes, if, for example, you thought. Changes on part E. Where, what if they get a license in November of twenty twenty-one, for example? But if you look at it, it's it's a year, it's just.
It just runs a calendar year and that.
Yep.
I can get behind that, I think it makes, that's how our liquor licenses run.
Right.
Then we go to the number of licenses, uh ten of each.
As requested, I will fix the, I see the spacing got messed up when it was emailed out, but. Fix that and the page numbers.
I'm all about page numbers.
So, so again, um we're the only county right now allowing anything other than. A dispensary.
Have you heard any feedback on that, I mean, why?
They just don't know how things are gonna work. And they would rather open up than try and restrict. So if things go really well, you go back in and you open up for. Another facility or a couple more dispensaries, um. Lincoln, Lincoln County is doing, I believe, a grow like one.
That guy was here last.
Yes, one grow, I wanna say it's one grow and one dispensary.
I thought they were doing two of each.
And one manufacturing, I don't know if it's two. Um no one that I know of is doing a testing facility, just because I think that that's gonna be a totally different ballgame.
I mean, all.
So as far as the, go ahead, Joe.
Nope, you go, Sherry.
Well, I was just gonna say, I just read in the paper, was the city of Allen has advertised their proposed ordinances for two. Uh dispensaries and of course Yankton's got two dispensaries, I've not heard or seen anything for. Utica, Mission Hill, Lesterville or Gayville.
So my question is. I guess I'm curious what's any specific concerns may be in like grow or, you know, in the licensing side, but. If if nobody's addressing it and I started dispensary. How do I sell it? Where do you get it?
Where do you your product?
Yeah.
Colorado.
Can it?
Washington, Oregon.
Come across state.
I don't know. Well, apparently Iowa, and I haven't been there, but. Mister Denherter told me that there is a medical cannabis dispensary in Sioux City, Iowa. And they don't have any grow places and they get it somewhere. So it must be something that you can get.
Correct, probably get it on Amazon.
I'm sorry?
Amazon.
Amazon.
Well, I actually had a client once who ordered. Methamphetamine and had it delivered by UPS. And he paid extra so he could get next day delivery.
Well.
Only because he volunteered that information.
So I I mean, I I keep try and keep up as as people are implementing, but we are. By far. The most liberal on the number.
But that presupposes that there're gonna be a whole bunch of people that within the limited area that we have available for these. Facilities to go to grow stuff. Or sell it, I don't think it's, I don't think we'll have ten, are we still at two? Liquor, packaged liquor licenses?
Well, okay, so we'll move forward uh with what's in front of us at this point. Okay, reduce then license fees.
Okay, so the license fees again, they're all over. There's a huge range, again, you went with the five thousand, that is from the state, that's the state recommended, so.
With renewal fee. Okay, anything in the application process you want to highlight, um anything that's not right out of. Just like our liquor license or something from the state.
And so Patty, section six would be what would apply, because that's what would go through the auditor's office. And you would have a a form where they would just fill it out.
Back in section five, did we talk about an an non refundable fee?
Yeah, I took out, I took out the they would get half back if they didn't get their license.
Why, I know there was dis discussion on it being non refundable, is that something we want to just add in there because. I guarantee there's somebody who doesn't follow through. That would make it clear that, hey, this is not refundable.
I I believe that language is in there somewhere.
It just says there shall be an application fee in the amount of five thousand and I took out that we would refund. So you want non refundable?
There's, I think there it discusses it back in the if it's denied or.
Yeah.
There's a different, we'll get into some verbiage, I think.
It might be helpful to have that same verbiage in section five too, and there's no question about it.
So is that number six that you you mentioned, is that the same for alcohol?
What? The applicant, no, these are the requirements for weed of medical cannabis establishment.
So, that is my question.
And I think we, the law changed and I think we only have to advertise a hearing if they are new. If they're all. I believe.
And that's and that's correct, um. It can be, again, you do the initial application and then under F five, it's the same. The renewal may be approved by the commission without a hearing unless there's been discipline.
Okay, let me reword my question a different way, uh so maybe maybe I understand it then, number six. My question was. Are we requiring the same? Information and the same standards for somebody that has a booze license as a cannabis?
No, no. Because there's different rules.
These are the rules required for a cannabis establishment. These are the rules required for a cannabis establishment.
I understand that. All I'm saying is that we discriminate and it gives us more of a poor drug.
Well, the, the state is discriminating. Department of Health is discriminating cuz they are choosing the, what has to be in there.
Are, are we on E?
We're on, yeah, we're on, well, six. And that's one of the questions I was gonna have, like six D, let's say. Can we have a boiled down version if all of this gets submitted to the state anyway? Or if they're gonna submit it to the state, I suppose they can just submit it to us, but.
Right. Again, I'm taking.
That's kinda your point, Don, right?
But don't they fill out the application? Patty accepts the application, then the application goes to peer. And then some brain trust in peer picks.
We review this application.
Well, we review the applications.
It's gonna get filled out, sent to Patty. Patty's gonna bring it to a meeting. We're gonna have a hearing where we go through all of these things.
And then it goes to peer. It still goes to peer. So we don't have the final say in any event.
No.
Correct.
Five E says if the commissioners do not prove the application, the commissioner shall endorse the application. Reasons for the denial and return the application and license fee to the applicant.
Well, either it's non-refundable or it's not.
Right, so.
Need to take that out.
Yeah, if it's, yeah, if it's none, I, I would still like to put non-refundable in number five and then that needs to be.
Like black, bold print italicized.
Just keep bringing them in and deny every one of them.
So it might be an income producer, then we can pay for a truck.
I just, I've got a note on. Twelve, I think, six, uh, D. I'm okay with that being in here. I'm just expecting them to be very preliminary.
I would've think, I would think so. I mean, again, they're not gonna go through a huge expense. Of doing a site plan and then have you guys deny it, so. And then there was state regulation and district three had in there that they do have to. Be constructed in conformance with the twenty twenty one. Addition of the building code, so.
Okay, so, uh, with E, any other concerns or do we go to F? Okay, F it is. Renewal process, any concerns with the renewal process or verbiage thereof?
Does it say anything? Uh, in there about, uh, what if we deny a renewal? Is, would that renewal application be? Non-refundable? So you say we license somebody and they don't do a good job and then they come to renew and we deny it. Are we gonna have non-refundable renewal fees as well?
Well, my understanding is the only way they don't get renewed automatically is if there's bad behavior. So if they have bad behavior, they might have an inkling that we're gonna keep their money.
I think I heard two questions. One, what's, can we deny a renewal?
Well, I, it clearly says we can.
And then.
But I, I, the app, the renewal.
Okay.
It is kinda, the, the point I'm getting at is, is it, the, the application fee, we're gonna clearly say it's not refundable, but the renewal fee.
So if we go back to section five license fees. Both of those will be non-refundable.
Yeah.
There shall be an application and, okay, yeah, that would, that would work.
And then F, I could add such renewal fee shall be paid at the time the renewal application is filed and. Throw in non-renewable application fee.
Yeah, or, or number four, go in there, you know, so we get it no later than November fourth. With the application.
I, I think number, number three says such renewal fee shall be paid at the time the renewal application is filed, so I think you're covered there, Deb.
Okay, I mean, I can add non, it's non-renewable, it's not a problem.
Okay, so are we all good and move to section six?
Yes.
And that's the suspension. Any concerns with, with that? Take that as we're okay.
Yes.
And then section seven, operating requirements and restrictions. These, I had just a couple of questions, Deb.
Sure. The first two are kind of what sets, you have to allow for a dispensary. That's, you, you can't, you cannot say no dispensary in Eaton County. So that, that's where A comes through. And then what they did was, they did say you could govern time, manner, and place. That's up to the county how we wanna do that. How restrictive you wanna be, if it's in reference to time, manner, or place.
Okay. These I'm not. Extremely concerned with, but just carry, like the federal and state holidays for. That looks like it's just dispensaries.
Just dispensaries. Because you can go in, yep. So again, you could, you could not address them. Everyone's addressing them because. That way it's pretty clear in your county for enforcement purposes. That, again, so time, when can it be open? Cuz then when you go to enforce it, it's in your local ordinance. You are operating on a federal holiday or a state holiday. Does it have to be in there? Probably not. Would I prefer to be more restrictive than less? Yeah.
And that was the thing I just wanted to bring up, that those things are not. Dictated by the state.
Those are, they're, those are up to the individual counties.
I, I guess I'd be fine, I don't, I'd be fine not restricting federal or state holidays on there.
Hours of operation.
Hours of operation, I think are fine. But.
I guess, I guess my feeling was, do you really want it open on Christmas and then? You got a whole bunch of, I don't know. I, to me, I looked at what the majority of the counties were doing. And the majorities are restricting. I mean, you restrict when you can buy alcohol.
Aren't they open on Christmas now?
Not all of them. I mean, and you can't buy like liquor.
Well, apparently you can go to the cork and bottle and buy it on Christmas Day.
Fourth of July and.
Well, I would like to think that you could plan your medical cannabis use so that, around your holidays, so that you.
That's exactly the point. I get the top of this ordinance says medical cannabis.
So it's, it's like if you have pain medication or antipsychotic medication or anything else. Heart medication, you should be able to figure out how much you consume in a day. So how many days left do I have?
Well.
You don't invite people over, have them consume some of your medical cannabis and go, oops, we're out.
Well, people do travel a lot on holidays too and.
Say what?
People travel a lot on holidays and, you know, their glaucoma might flare up.
Well, I like to take my medication with me when I travel.
Were those, were those the questions you had, Joe?
Yeah, just, I wanted more discussion on those and, and, yeah. So let's kinda chop through these, at least get a, an idea here. The federal and state holidays. Where do people feel on that?
I just, I, I don't know what it's trying to accomplish, if it, you know.
Keeping in mind they have to find somebody that's gonna work on those holidays. Followed by, just because I can be open doesn't mean I have to be open.
So Joe, you're, Joe, you're essentially asking our stance on this, so whether we wanna keep it or pitch it.
Yeah, I, basically, that's, that's where I'm at is, is where do we feel on the holidays and then move into the hours of operation? Do we? Do what, how much we wanna address in this and how little do we wanna address in it?
Okay, so if we're looking at C, which is federal and state holidays, I'm okay with pitching it. Anybody else?
Throwing it out.
To getting rid of it.
Kicking, okay.
I would be fine with that too.
That's fine.
I think people, you're gonna realize there's more federal and state holidays than.
Than you think.
Hours of operation, I'm, I'm fine with that, eight to eight, that'd be.
So, so before we, before we move. Before we move on, are we, are we getting rid of C?
Don?
Unless anyone speaks up, general consensus is to get rid of it.
Okay, now we can move on.
So hours, are people okay with eight to eight?
No, I think.
I'm okay, I'm okay with eight to eight.
Great, Wanda?
I thought the state statute was different than that.
Okay, well, the state says, again.
I thought it was nine to eight, I don't know why.
That's the recommended.
Their recommendation. And I can. Is, I'm fine with that.
Is E in the state law?
Yes.
To be a stickler, I don't, we don't regulate other pharmacies, but I'm okay with eight to eight too.
Just so I'm clear, they could be open from ten to five if they wanted to be. It doesn't have to be eight to eight.
Mine says may not operate between eight PM and eight AM.
Okay.
So you can operate.
Anytime, two hours a day.
Exactly.
Okay, so we can, consensus on D to keep it?
Yes.
That is, is out of the state? Or not?
Yes.
Whatever.
The, the rest of them are basically. State regulations to the extent that they said where they don't want. Or where they shouldn't be.
Right.
Um, and what they don't want, especially with E, is they don't want some. One opening, writing a thing and then you go next door to their pharmacy and fill, you know, to their.
Like Yankton Medical Clinic with Yankton Medical Pharmacy?
Yes, so you don't, you don't write it and say. So really, the rest of them. Um, are recommendations either from the state or district three as far as. Can't sell liquor where they don't want someone to have a liquor store and you can get medical cannabis. And then you can go ahead and, you can get the.
Smoke and drink.
Yeah.
Rest, you know, the thousand feet public school, I think is fine personally. Four hundred feet of child welfare agency worship, inpatient alcohol or drug treatment, does anybody have issue with that? That's four hundred feet's really not much. H, I don't know if I. Like I said, four hundred feet's not much, but if I've got a building here and there's already a dispensary next door. Preventing me from starting one, I don't know if that's. I agree with that or not.
I think they just don't want it to be.
In the same building.
And so the four hundred feet is a way to just.
And in the county, it's prob, in the county, it's not gonna probably be an issue. It's more of the city, so. Yeah.
What did you say?
I said it's kinda like a cable.
Oh, I think Lincoln County put in, uh, odors cannot leave the property.
Um, under twenty, so J. Can't, if you're under twenty one, you cannot be on the premises.
That's fine.
You have to have someone over twenty one. Working.
With non-disqualifying felonies.
So does anybody have any concerns with the remainder of these? I think they're.
Well, I, I'm guessing that Ann was gonna put in there for the lawyers.
Why do you pick on the lawyers?
Because she'll make a diligent effort, that's where you sue.
No.
Now, oh, you've got retail sales.
And you have to look at their driver's license to see how old they are.
Sure.
Like, okay, number.
Yeah, so you can't, so O would be your dispensaries. And you can't have a drive-off window.
If we're in, uh, eight, yeah, eight B, talks about signage.
We can be there. I don't have any further concerns on, on seven.
For, for B, no exterior signage.
That's part of the, that's part of the statute.
Well, I just, uh, you know, marijuana, cannabis, or other word phrase or symbol commonly understood to.
That's kinda tough.
There's, it's, there's not gonna be the green. Cross, I mean, or, I mean, what, a leaf. I just, I, I don't know how that's gonna be enforced, but if it's in state law. And then such words or phrases may be used if specifically approved by the commissioners, so then that's, that's on us. Whether. Thank you, Steve.
And I can.
You know, I, I, I didn't, I didn't see any of that in the, in the July twenty seventh version of. Their rules.
And I can check on where that's all coming from, Sherry, if you, if the commission would say. You want, for, for sure, we have to say that it has to comply with our article fourteen. Cuz that's our zoning. How the signage has to work. Do you want me to check? On B and C?
No, well, I think, I'm pretty sure C is in there cuz I, I don't think you can just give samples out for free. I think that's what C's about, but B is the one that I, I just don't recall seeing that in their rules.
Okay, I'll check on that one. It did be like high B having little things on.
Okay, so nine, it's non-transferable, I think that's.
Well, just what they did on Thursday. They issued rules regarding. Application of location. A transfer location, uh, to transfer where you're doing it. So you apply for a license and for this location and then you decide to change it. The very, and this was, this is dated September second, twenty twenty one, so. Friday, basically. But the last thing says, nothing in this section, so they allow for it. Under certain rules, the last thing says, nothing in this section shall be interpreted to require a city or county. To issue a registration license or permit to operate at the new address. So you guys had initially said no transfer, and then they did the same thing for the transfer of ownership.
Okay, cuz I was gonna say that one is transfer of location, and I can see that because if you. Okay, cause I was gonna say that one is transfer of location, and I can see that because if you. When you come in and apply, you're gonna have apply for a specific location, and if you want to transfer, it might not be a suitable.
Right.
Location.
So, there, there's new. There's new regs that say you can, and here's how we want you to do it. But both of, both the sections say. That a city or county doesn't have to allow for the transfer. So, my question is, you want to keep with the no transfer of the license? Cause right now, we're not allowing for the transfer of the license or the transfer to a different location.
I think we need transfer of location available.
Might just make them reapply. Or they should have all that stuff figured out and they.
Or do we call it a variance?
We don't do those.
Businesses move all the time.
Well.
So, let's, let's say that I have a cannabis dispensary and Don burns it down. So I can't then take my dispensary to another location? Or do I just come in and ask for permission to move it because Don has burned it down?
You have to set up a tent. So I, I would be a proponent of allowing transfer of locations, but it must be approved.
Well, yeah, there's, there's a procedure.
Sure.
So, that's the new one.
So, so the.
An application for transfer of the, of the certificate to a different physical location. Would require a complete, completed change of location form documentation that it's operating in compliance. Et cetera, there's a list of them.
Wouldn't it be basically a new application, cause you would need to make sure all the same requirements?
No, that's, that's the thing, it's not a new application, so. It's just a shortened thing that says. I, we're in compliance with all this stuff and then here's our new location. We're not, not operating at one oh one East Street, we're operating at one oh two.
So who's making sure that the new location is in compliance with all the original ones? That's not four hundred feet from another location, a thousand feet.
Well, that's, my understanding is that, once you file an application, let's say it's approved by the state. Before you can open your doors, there has to be a, I think they called it a certificate of compliance.
Right, and that's what, you have to have a certificate of compliance with all applicable local zoning requirements.
Yep, so if our local zoning requirement requires three orange. Fire extinguishers, then there better be three orange fire extinguishers, cause if you have two. And they're yellow, you don't get your certificate.
So I guess, Sherry, my.
I have four green ones.
My question would be, do you, I mean. One, does everyone agree you don't want to allow to transfer the license itself?
Yes.
Yes, except I want clarification on that.
Okay.
Because then it becomes, I sell you, I get a license, then I sell you my license.
Right, but I think they still have to go through all the background check and all that, so here, my only question would be. If, if I'm operating at one oh one Joe Street, and I want to sell my business, turnkey. To Wanda, and she applies for an operation at one oh one Joe Street. Does it?
Assuming I pass the background checks.
She's getting her own license.
Right, but when they check, are they gonna say there's already an establishment at that facility and deny it? And if, if the answer's no, then I would say non-transferable is fine. If the answer is yes, then we need a.
But you're not transferring the license, you're transferring the location.
Right.
I have to get my own license.
You've got to, in your application, you have to state where you're gonna operate, and if you're operating at my building.
So you're saying if there's.
I'm gonna want some money.
Is there a, would, well, we wouldn't, cause we would know it's a new license. So would the state, so your question is, if the, if the license. On the, on the application is the same as an already existing establishment, will that prevent it?
Right.
And I would say no, because you can get a license for a grow facility and a dispensary. And a manufacturing at the same location.
And a tester.
Right, but I can't have two.
Dispensaries.
Within four hundred feet of each other, and we're now licensing.
Two.
Two within the same address.
Except you're not going to keep yours anymore, you're going to get a grow license.
Chicken or the egg.
And you're gonna sell, sell your product to me.
It's chicken or the egg, though, when, when does mine expire and when does yours start?
Okay, so does the rest of the commission, are you with Joe? That as long as no transfer. Of the license, but you want to make sure someone could get their own license at that same location?
Yeah, I want to be able to sell the business as long as that person passes their own background check and license, but. Otherwise, no transfer of license.
I see what he's doing.
Selling you a business.
So essentially, you can only have one active license at any one time.
Right.
So, in theory, yours would stop September thirty and mine would start October one.
Right.
Yeah. As long as there's a. Line of demarcation of some kind. That makes sense, Deb?
So. Then I don't know, then you might, I mean, I, I would tell you to look at the new. Forty, the new Department of Health then.
Can you send it to us?
Cause there, you can transfer. Ownership interest of fifty percent or more to a party not already approved by the department. But it requires them to get, to do their initial application. And less than fifty percent, you can transfer it under different rules.
Okay.
So maybe you guys want to look at this new stuff that came out on Friday?
Look through that.
Cause it really does address those two, the transfer issue.
Okay, and then next, we have enforcement penalties, I don't have any concerns myself through this. Section ten. Anybody else? Section eleven. Respect date, looks pretty straightforward. With that, I guess I would. Um, I'm gonna try to look through some of that transfer. As long as it be possible to sell, locate, the business location.
No, I, I, I get it.
And outside of that, I didn't have any too many concerns unless. We kind of addressed those and you were gonna check on a few, but I'd say from now until. Very short period. Uh, go through this again, and if there's any concerns, um, to let Deb know.
Can't, can't we say that with regard to the sale or transfer that would be in accordance with state guidelines? And just stop?
Well, I, I mean, like I'm saying, if, if, if you. This, again, thank the guy that was here, cause I sent him everything and he said. Hey, did you know that there, these came out on Friday? And I was like, oh, no, I was at my daughter's wedding, which is weird to my way, so no, I did not know these came out on Friday, but. I mean, it's pretty important, again, they keep updating stuff, so.
Every minute.
I think we need to just stay on top and Valley's been really good about helping me too, that we'll send stuff out, but now my question is. To the commissioners, we do have to get this noticed for a first reading, a second reading. And adopted, so that we're in compliance with everything, how do we do that? Cause technically, we haven't had a first reading yet, cause we gotta notice it.
Well, why, why don't we notice it for next time?
Well, I think, can you? Check on what need, what we discussed? Update.
But then I put it, if we did the first reading at the, Sherry, did you check on that, too? If we do the first reading at the next commission meeting, the second reading would be on October fifth?
Why don't you, why don't you make the changes and we have a Zoom meeting on Friday and get it over with?
Well, we, we have a meeting for the townships.
But, but you have to advertise it so many days before the meeting.
That's, that's not what I'm getting at, but make the changes. And, uh, we could, after our township, we could review the changes, and should be ready to go for the next reading for the first reading.
But, my understanding is, my understanding is that the first reading, we can still make changes.
We can still make changes at the first reading.
If you want to do the first reading, the twenty-first, the notice has to go in the paper, I have to send the proof to the paper tomorrow.
For of the note.
Yep.
Yes.
Yep, so that's why I'm asking, like, we have to set the deadline tonight.
So why don't we put the notice in the paper tomorrow, so we have the fir, first reading on the twenty-first? And just.
Sounds good.
Cause we could beat this to death.
Gotta go with what we go with, the state's gonna keep changes, it's not gonna be perfect, but I'd rather have something than nothing.
Yeah, I think.
And we're gonna have to probably.
Meeting on the twenty-first.
Keep updating it as it goes, but it sounds like from Deb saying it's, the state's making changes up till recently, we're just gonna have to go with something.
That sound good, we'll get it noticed tomorrow. We'll have a hearing on the twenty-first.
First reading.
First reading, any, come to that meeting prepared with any.
So then we'll.
Changes or requests.
Changes, well before that.
Yes.
Twenty-first.
Yep.
You're also, also doing the second reading of the, or.
Second reading of the zoning ordinance, sure, thank you, Bill.
So, does that, did you look at a timeline, Sherry, will that work?
Was the state gonna be, when is the state going to be live with their rules?
The last, I, I don't, I don't know, no.
No, that's the last state they can.
I, again, the only date that I've been getting is October fourth now.
Yep, and, and there's, there's no way we can, we can make that.
Not, not unless we would bump up.
The soonest we can have it is the twenty-first.
Because this is a licensing ordinance, can it be petitioned to a vote? Or is it simply effective at the second reading?
Twenty days after, I thought.
Well, can it be petitioned?
Well, that's if it goes to a vote.
Well.
If it doesn't, if, if there's no petition for a vote, my understanding is it's effective when you sign it. Now, I'm, I'm not the legal person in the room.
A petition.
So you, you want me to check on the effective date? If it's effective.
Yes.
If it's effective as of the second reading, that would be October fifth.
And, and that's pretty darn close, the other option is to have a special meeting on the twenty-eighth or something like that.
Right.
Unless, yeah, so if you, we noticed tomorrow, first reading twenty-first, I noticed the twenty-second. You can come back the fifth and do your second.
Right.
Unless you have a special meeting.
Right.
I would say stick to that, even if we have a special meeting, if the. If the. If it ends up that this can be petitioned to a vote, so we have to wait the twenty days. And the publication and all of that moving, having a special meeting a week early isn't gonna, not gonna affect it much.
Do you think there's gonna be a large ground swell of people against it? Look how many people are here today.
There shouldn't be, but the issue, the issue would become, if, if it can be petitioned, if we do have to wait for the publication in the twenty days. Nobody can apply for a license until that's done.
Then too bad.
That's just, I mean, that's.
Well, my understanding is, from talking to Ross Denherger, that they don't think there's gonna be any product within South Dakota. Available for retail sales before the first of the year, so I don't think it's really gonna be a problem.
All right, Bill, so if, I think. Bill, I think you've got the go-ahead tomorrow to, to get the notice in the paper, and I thought there was an outline somewhere in all the paperwork we've been. Emailing back and forth.
Okay.
And I think it should be, you just could change, just have to do the ordinance number, and then how it's, how it's written. And I, um, the District Three stuff has a sample. And I, send it to me and I can double check.
Okay, we ready to move on to the next agenda, agenda item? Okay, claims.
What do you need, a motion?
Need a motion.
I move, we approve the claims.
I'll second.
Motion by Fox, second by Clemish. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed, motion pass.
Move approval.
Second.
Uh, motion by Kettering, second by Clemish, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes.
And this was insurance, um, money that emergency manager. Uh, his drone, the motor, um, burned out, so he had to get a new.
Okay.
And then insurance paid it.
Okay, so we have a.
Move approval.
Unanticipated, uh, unanticipated revenue in the amount of one thousand four hundred eighty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents. I've got a motion by Clemish.
Aye.
Second.
Favor.
Second by, by Los.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed, motion approved. And then.
Did we lose a secretary?
No, she's, she's after this one.
I'm sorry.
No, she's asking why, if, if we lost a secretary.
Oh.
Another one?
And we just received the, um, background checks and they were all okay.
Okay.
I move to approve the new part-time secretary, whose background checks have come back all okay.
Second.
Who is it? Who, have they, have they hired somebody yet?
They made a recommendation, I think we, can tell if they accept, we should. Should leave their name out of it.
Okay.
Okay, uh, motion to approve recommendation of the nurse, part-time nurse secondary, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion passes. Okay, go on to meeting minutes.
I move the approval of the August seventeen, twenty twenty-one. Minutes.
Second.
Motion by Fox, second by Clemish, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, motion passes. And then. We've got, these minutes are separated, but it was the same meeting. Um, so I'll go with August thirty-first, uh, commission and planning meeting minutes.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Kettering, second by Clemish to approve the county and planning minutes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Los will abstain.
Thank you.
I will move the approval of the August thirty-one, twenty twenty-one special meeting minutes.
Second.
I've got one. Nitpicky thing, maybe, um, we, there was no, we took public comment, there was no public comment, do we need to note that? Do you normally note that? And I say that because it was a hearing for an ordinance, if we need to make note that there was no.
Opposition.
On the, just the commission meeting or the planning and.
Um, just the commission, the special meeting.
I guess I'm not.
Cause we held it as two me, I mean, a joint meeting, but we held two.
At the beginning, at the beginning or at the end?
Well, on the agenda item.
Yeah.
Um, for the ordinance.
At the first.
Yeah, cause he missed.
The joint one.
Yeah, cause he, no, at the second one, because he missed it at the first joint one. Yeah, cause he, no, at the second one, because he missed it at the first joint one. Cause he was back playing with his phone.
And he did come in from his seat during the two, so.
He, he's in here for the joint one, Ned Horsted, uh, commented on the ordinance, but then in the second. Meeting was the commission only after planning and zoning. And that's my question, do you normally put there, no public comment was made?
Because it was an actual hearing on.
I'm just wondering if this gets somewhere. If you don't normally.
I guess. I usually say if no one spoke. If it's a hearing.
Then I would.
On that, on the second one.
So then on the second one.
There was no public comment.
Who made that first motion, can I ask you to retract that, resend that motion to prove?
The August thirty first one or the August seventeen?
August thirty first special meeting minutes.
Wanda and Dan.
I'll move to, uh.
Wanda.
Oh, sorry.
I made the motion for the approval of the August seventeen, twenty twenty one, I believe.
And then you also did the Yankton, just the Yankton County one.
Special meeting.
Right.
Yeah, so you want me to modify my August thirty one, twenty twenty one special meeting minutes? To include the fact that at the time, the opportunity for public comment, nobody commented.
Bingo, thank you.
Second.
Second, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Los will abstain again.
Thank you, motion passes.
I don't know.
Now we're down to public comments and there's nobody here.
I'm giving the minutes to Joe tonight to look at.
You're gonna comment?
Oh, man, okay.
Also with Joe and Sherry.
Okay, so we'll move on to public comment, uh, anybody care to make public comment? Hearing didn't see none, public comment is closed, does anybody have commissioner updates?
I do unfortunately have a few things, so I've tried to be real quick. At the district three meeting I planned, or that I attended, there was a lot of good discussion, especially on a sanitary district. Um, for our area. It was recommended to us, I, I spoke with some of the DA and our staff, does anybody have an issue if I go, uh, speak with, uh. Um, stockwell engineering, uh, and maybe some other, uh. Engineering companies and try to, uh, have them come in and maybe present us on the cost of an updated feasibility study for the lake area.
How much is one of these studies?
Well, they'll come in and tell us that, I'm just gonna contact them and, and a lot of that'll be covered under the, uh, ARPA funding specifically.
I talked to Tom Naker and he was very active in getting. A sanitary sewer district and he said that. Um, he's wrote some grants to help get some funding, so you might wanna talk to him about that.
Thank you. Um, if any, nobody has an issue, I'll look into that, sure, somebody come, uh. Uh, tended to district three meeting, a lot of good information there, um, IT. Um, those who don't know, um, um, our IT person is, um, moving on. We need to get something figured out with that, uh, if I have the board's permission, I will, uh, work with, uh, probably Gary better. And, uh, try to have somebody come in and maybe give us some quotes on IT for the county.
I think you should also check with departments on what they need.
Yeah, and I think Gary did that, uh, I'm just gonna get a couple, uh, contacts that I know. And have them come give us a presentation, so we know what we want, um, is there an issue with that?
No, I, I see it as probably a two-step process, I think we need someone to bridge the gap and then I think we do. Since we're switching, we need to look at.
What we want.
A big holistic approach, joining with other counties, possibly contracting with somebody. What department heads need some of that, so I think, yeah.
And I guess I would say we kinda hold off because of it, but I think there's some department heads. That would say there might be time to consider and then outside.
Yeah.
Do you think there is enough one there for a full-time role? I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Well, we'll put that on the agenda, but for the.
Brown, yeah, Brown County didn't feel like they had enough for, for one person. But, yeah, well, I'll put that on, I'll make some contacts, people will come in, uh, yeah, so.
I think that's just a big. You're gonna pay a lot more than what we're paying and a lot for a full-time.
For nothing.
Do you have any commissioner updates?
Nothing other than apparently the. NFAA, uh, with their three world tournaments, and they're still looking for volunteers because.
Okay.
Um, there's a lot of people coming, a lot of people bringing money to the city of Yankton. And not too much to the county of Yankton, but.
And do you know what kind of, um, just general health working or anything specific for?
All different kinds, checking people in, checking.
You got.
Forty cap or thirty cap, uh, cabinet stories, uh.
Oh, there, yeah, there's thirty different opportunities and you can go online and you can pick what you wanna do, they're. Looking for drivers to drive the dignitaries around, people to check people in, check their credentials. Check in their bows, lock their bows up, all kinds of, you know, point them in the direction of where the food vendors are, there's just.
And you get a free T-shirt.
I'm sorry?
And you get a free T-shirt for it, don't you? Good last name.
Some do anyway, some do.
Okay, anything else?
And Hyundai is providing all new vehicles to drive those people around.
That's amazing.
Two truckloads, whatever those big things are, full of new vehicles to drive those folks around.
Okay, anything else?
Nada.
Sherry, did you have any updates?
Uh, just a reminder, we, on Friday, we have that, um, meeting with the township boards. About the new funding available to them and taking an inventory.
I, I'll be able to make that, I don't know if anyone has conflicts or not, but.
I can't.
Okay.
What time is it?
Nine o'clock.
And we don't need a quorum, but.
No, 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 it's just an informational session, but it is open.
Yep. So I think put something in the paper.
We should probably still put something in the paper because it's.
Well, if they put the, there's an agenda on the, wasn't it sent to the paper?
We probably should.
I think assume there's gonna be a quorum, I'm just saying we're, we're not taking action, so we. We don't have to have.
But if, yeah, I think.
Three people, that's what I'm saying.
If you wanna go down to two, I, I can miss it.
I, I think just put something in the paper, that.
Well, I mean, and there could be, I don't know if it's on us, but there could be possible quorums of the township boards too. If three people from.
Well, I'm not gonna worry about them. I mean, I don't have.
Let's just do.
I don't have to advertise it.
There's no downside to putting it in, just do it.
So about next.
Yeah.
Go ahead and put the agenda in there.
The only update. That I have, I've been forgetting for a couple meetings now, but, uh. I know ordinance changes are swear words, but, um. There is a, gonna be a lot of funding coming down our way for broadband expansion and. In rural America, broadband expansion is gonna mean towers, not underground fiber. So. Keep that in the back of your mind, I know I, I have said it before, I started, um, some changes, I think. I think we've got a good direction, Gary, um, helped me with those, and so I think we've got a good direction, but. Some point we need to address that too, so just a heads up.
Now, is it true that, um, Yankton County has had an application? Approved by the planning commission for wind towers? Don?
Not that I'm aware of. Not to my knowledge, they did, they've, they have come forward, uh, several years ago and.
No, I mean recently.
Not. To my.
I missed one meeting in June, but I was on the.
The only thing possibly would be like a Met Tower. But I, I don't know.
Well, then I move that we go into executive session.
Second.
Motion by Fox, second by Kettering to go into executive session for poor relief pursuant to South Dakota law. One dash twenty five dash two and twenty eight dash thirteen and twenty eight dash thirteen dash one point three. And the executive session for litigation pursuant to South Dakota law one dash twenty five dash two, sub paragraph three. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion passes, Sherry, are you, uh, bowing out?
Yeah, uh, unless it's, um, you need me there.
So, okay.
Can we stay in here or can you shut that thing off? Do we have to go into a little room?
We're better, this place is very bugged. Okay, take care, Sherry.
Okay, bye-bye.
Reading.
I move we go out of executive session into regular session.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in regular session, no action will be taken as a result of executive, executive session.
I think move we adjourn.
Item for next meeting, I'd like to discuss, uh, mileage reimbursement rates for county.
Great.
Um, so we'll have that on the.
Seems like we're, we're way low.
We're, we're not, we're way, we're way out of what the state is.
Nine dollars and sixty-five cents a mile.
Yeah.
Wasn't that what he said?
Nine dollars and fifty-two cents a mile is what they're charging.
So I think we just need to take a look at, uh, per, my, per BM.
Travel expense.
Yeah, travel expenses.
Okay, so travel expense, uh, employee travel expense for next meeting.
I'll volunteer. For nine dollars and fifty-two cents a mile, I'll go somewhere and stand around.
Too, for that.
Well, yeah, if, if you did ten trips in a year out to Delphus and back, you could buy the ambulance there.
Yeah. And then we'll have ordinance, license ordinance on the next agenda.
Oh, and then, and then I think, didn't, weren't we gonna talk about ambulances?
And then.
And full-time versus part-time overages?
Yes.
Yes.
You wanna make sure Steve is on, has, is ready for that.
And then we were gonna have our first marijuana reading.
Okay, that's all I have. Wanda has a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Clemish, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, we are adjourned.